This meeting to order and with that, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States
The United States of America.
To the republic which it stands one nation under God. I move we approve that agenda, but not necessarily in that order.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made in a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 The motion is carried. Next, we have committee reports. And we'll start with fire.
Nothing new.
Okay. Library?
Um, as far as the library, I'd like to let everyone know the Friendsville Library is in need of a treasurer. If anybody is interested in volunteering their time, please contact Joyce. There has been an approval of honoring Jane Hansen for her 20-plus years of volunteer work with the Hudson Garden Club. And the garden club does a majority of creating and maintaining all the gardens in the at the Hudson Public Library. The new library director position is entering the final phase of interviews. The plan is to have a new director in place by May 31st of 2021. Shelley Togas will be presenting tonight to give the public and our board a better overlook and understanding of the library's financial position.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Any other questions for Susan? All right, hearing none. The WTA, Wisconsin Towns Association did not meet this month, nor did the EMS. So I have nothing to report on either of those those units of government. My chairman's report tonight primarily is with roads. The road restrictions are still on. With the heat and the wind we had yesterday, they might come off sooner than we think, but it's anyone's guess at this point. We've completed and are doing repairs on the Trout Brook Bridge. We approved that last one of our last meetings and are doing the reinforcement underneath that. I sent a note out to the board. Each year we spend about $1,000 patching the overlay on top of that bridge. And the county has said for about $5,000, we could redo it. So I think I wanted to make sure we talked about that and get it into the discussion. But I think that's something we should seriously consider for later this summer. And then you've also probably seen it in public discussions, but the city of Hudson completed their annexation of the 16.7 acre parcel on the west side of, excuse me, the east side of Carmichael and north of the target Culver area in there for the Hudson physician's use in the future. So that's the rest, the rest of those items we'll talk about later tonight. A public comment, is there anyone here?
Don, point of order. I'd like to approve consented gen items. If nobody has anything to to remove, I'd like to approve those as presented.
You want to make that motion?
Yes, please.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. All right. Public comment, anyone can speak on an issue that's not on the agenda. We asked you keep it to about a minute or two and the board can listen, but we're not to engage in in a back and forth dialogue. Anyone here tonight for public comment? Okay. All right.
Don, this is
Yeah, are you still there, Marion?
Yes, I am, Don. As 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 usual, I'm sitting at town hall waiting for an open meeting to to resume. This has been almost a year now without an open meeting in the town of Hudson. I'm pretty sure that you had been contacted by the the DA in St. Croix County about opening up the town hall meeting. I don't know why it's not open tonight. I was told it would be open tonight. It's it's very unfortunate and I look forward to the time that we can hold open meetings in the in the town of Hudson. And I really feel like I've missed out for a whole year of any activity. I can't see anything. I'm on a telephone and I know there's a lot of people that can't participate. So I think it's a shame and I hope there's a correction for it, but I don't know why it's not open this evening. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right, Shelley, I'm going to ask, even though you're next on the agenda. I've got number eight right behind that. We've got, we've got the lady from the DNR at Cedar Corp. I don't think this should be controversial at all. So if you don't mind, I'm just going to go to that.
Oh, not at all.
Okay. Mitch and Candace. Is, as we recall from the board, they, our Cedar Corp is working with the DNR. There are some some additional monitoring wells that need to be placed throughout the town. In our prior meetings, we talked about the location and the size of the pipes and the fact that they could be moved in the future and that the local citizens would be notified before anything was drilled so that they could be aware of or perhaps modestly move the location of that in case it was in front of a mailbox or something like that. Our attorney, Paul Mahler, has negotiated agreement that is ready to be signed. And I just felt before it was signed that the board should make sure that they approve it in the form of a motion. It makes it more formal and that's why it's on the agenda tonight. But but Mitch and Candace, is there anything that you wanted to add to that?
I, this is Mitch. I don't have anything to add, Don. I, we work with the attorney and I believe everything's in place.
With that, is there a motion to someone like to make that empowers me to sign those documents on behalf of the board?
So moved.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussions from the board?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm wondering if the neighbor, if the landowners adjacent to these wells were notified? And if there were any objections to the wells placement or to any, to anything regarding the well?
We will, as part of this agreement, we will notify by letter the adjacent property owners before we do anything and then meet with them if they wish. So we haven't notified them yet.
Right. I would have thought that that would have been preemptive to where we're at now.
No, if you might recall, the the discussions were between the town and the BNR. It would be in the town right of way and the public right of way. The the homeowners would certainly have input into that. But for the public purpose of testing all of the underground water, that's why we're cooperating with them. We have that legal agreement in place. It allows us to have those wells either capped or moved if we need to. And that was one of the conditions that we placed on those discussions and went into the legal agreement that they just wouldn't go out there arbitrarily and put a well in, that they notify the landowner and work with them on any location.
So what are we approving tonight?
The legal, the legal document that allows the DNR and the town of Hudson to move forward. I could have, I could have signed it without the board. I didn't think it was the way to do it.
And Are we going to be able to see that before it is signed?
I said, I sent that on to you guys.
I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, I don't think I've gotten it either.
Well, we can get you a copy of it.
I know I haven't gotten it.
Candace Akora with the DNR. I did walk these sites with Mitch when we were looking at a location for these wells. And all of them, while they are in the right of way, none of them were immediately in front of any homes. They're always off to the side and preferably along weeds or or tree lines. So they're disclosed a little bit, still easy to get to for sampling.
Sure, yeah, I realize that's probably how you do it. I just want to make sure that, you know.
Yeah, well, and the other, the other thing is, yep, the other thing is to keep it fluid too, as Mitch can probably attest to more than I is that when we do go out and survey the area because of utility lines and that, we need to have flexibility to move them. But we're always going to keep the neighborhood and the owners, you know, the utmost decision making. We're not going to put something that's unsightly and they're pretty slim too. They're not very large or obscured. So.
Okay. All right, do I hear a motion to approve?
No, I still got questions, Don. I said let Ken go first. I got several of them. Candace, do you work for Cedar Corp or the DNR?
I work with the DNR.
Okay. First question is, how much money is left in the Junker Landfill Trust Fund?
I would have to look at the trust fund to date because we get a monthly installment until the end of 2022.
Okay. Um, the next question is, how long after these wells are put in, will there be discussions about that change in the the VOC dropping from .5 to .05? And what's the long term, long term result of that?
Um, well, the, yep, so the VOC of concern that is in rulemaking right now is called trichlorethylene or TCE. That is looking at being changed from a .5 protection action limit down to a .05. And so that decision should be done and made in rulemaking by the end of this year or by the summer of next year.
And why is that happening?
It's the toxicological data that has been researched by Department of Health. That has now concluded that the lower standard is more protective of children and women of childbearing ages. So it's the health effects of TCE being consumed.
On all populations or just children, women, pregnant women? You know what I mean? You hear what I'm saying? To me, it seems like we're moving ahead with that and the Junker Landfill Trust is running out. I got some real major concerns of the future with this situation.
Yep. Well, as an example, the state of Minnesota lowered their standard to very similar in 2011 based on the same toxicological data. So the concern is there, the risk is there, and the DNR is just making it official with evaluating that and putting it into law. So we are working with Mitch Evanson. That's what part of this monitoring well network is, is putting into these new wells so that we can start evaluating the whole plume instead of using private homes as sampling points. We can evaluate the entire plume and evaluate the risk each home.
So you'll set up a new plume location for where that is?
Uh, it just helps us give the extent and the magnitude of the groundwater impacts. And also along with that, we'll, we'll be able to reconfirm and also adjust the special well casing area concerning that plume.
That was the other thing I'm concerned about.
Okay.
The special well casing rules.
That is the drinking water program. I provide the data. Yep, I provide the data and I is currently in internal review right now.
So I got a one more question regarding that. If the standards are dropping to .05, is that going to expand the area of the Junker landfill? Is it going to expand it out to where more filtration and stuff like that may be required?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. Currently, we can evaluate our data looking at those standards, applying them like as if they were today. So we can look at all the data sets we have for the entire area. And that's what I've been working really hard in the last year is to evaluate where and what homes could potentially be affected if it will expand or not. We have seen overall, the entire plume is degrading through natural attenuation. But the levels are still there in some of the homes through the core plume that is from west of Junkers landfill. But that is what we're currently sampling for and evaluating.
Well, I guess thinking back to Tim's question with how much money is left in the in the Junker landfill settlement? If more filtration and more, you know, filtration within homes, if the area is expanded because of the lower standards, whereas what's going to help homeowners pay for that?
Yep, and we are currently evaluating that with what money is left, what the future of that area is going to look like. And then also acquiring funding post the the trust fund. So there's a lot of things that I can't really speak on right now because I just don't have answers for you because we are working with our legal. We are working with the current trust fund that we have and we're looking through other sources through federal and state. So.
When will we know about that, Candace?
Um, so specifically right now, we are putting together a special well casing area website. So within a month's time, we will have that resource available to the public with an interactive map. You can look at the homes and what the concentrations are. So we're working a lot on our outreach. We will be setting up a gov delivery system so that people will get notifications. And we are setting up a email box too in that website. We will be contacting everybody on any decision making with the special well casing area. In regards to the financial end of Junkers landfill, the town of Warren and Norlake, those are all being evaluated. And I don't have a timeline on those.
Candace, maybe something in the future you'd be more than happy to come over, attend another board meeting, I would think, and update the community as to what's happening, right?
Correct. That is part of our communication plans with the special well casing area. As we go ahead with what the requirements are going to be and the variances and what they will look like. Part of our outreach will be public notification and public meetings.
Will we have to ask for that or will you reach out, Candace?
It will be a reach out for the town of Hudson.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, so just to circle back, we've got Mitch Evanson from Cedar Corp. They reached out with the DNR. They gave us maps and proposals as to where these potential additional sampling areas could be. We had our meeting and we went through all the issues as to what we required, including a legal document, which they've all complied with. So do I hear a motion to approve the legal document that's been approved by all parties?
Don't you have that motion?
I don't.
I think that was our motion.
Yeah, I think that was our motion.
I got one other statement for Candace and Mitch. The residents own the right of way. The town of Hudson does not. Just so you know, that's their property. We have right of way for locations to do things in the right of way, but we do not own that land in the town of Hudson. Like in some municipalities, they do. Just so you know. With Ken's question, you know what I mean?
I think that's fine, you know, and I know Candace is working with Cedar Corp and in Warren Township and other townships throughout the county, so. But I do want to move on tonight. So do I, there's, motion made has been seconded? I'll say.
No, Susan seconded.
Susan had it seconded, yeah.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of me signing the agreement on behalf of the town, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is carried. And Candace and Mitch, come back and see us anytime. And from the discussions tonight, you know how sensitive that is and please send those letters and work with those neighbors so they're completely informed what you're doing. Which I know, know you will.
And you'd let us know when those websites are up too?
Yep, I need the director approval before we can move forward. So that will be within two weeks and then the build out from there.
All right, perfect.
Okay, and Mitch, Mitch, if you're still here, will you tell Kristen from your office that I'll get those signed tomorrow with Vicky's help and get those mailed over to you? Is that okay?
That's great. Thank you. And then we'll wait for the road bands to go off and we'll be scheduling the drilling at that time.
Okay.
And we'll notify you also.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Shelley. Now we're going to go back to number seven.
Great, thank you. I really appreciate time on your agenda tonight. I've done this presentation two weeks ago at the city of Hudson. And that is on River Channel if you would like to go and see the comments and discussion they had afterward. I also did go to St. Joe and talk to their board. Actually, I didn't do this presentation. I was there for questions. If you want to ask me about that, I'm happy to answer, although I think it would be best to reach out maybe to Teresa Johnson to get her assessment. She's really led the charge in getting this momentum and getting the discussion moving. And I'll be going to the village next month. So it's kind of a tough presentation. There's some bad news and some sticker shock. And I'm just here to give you the best information that I've have and to take your questions and see, you know, how you want to move forward in upcoming months. Am I able to share my screen to do this power?
Yes, I think so. Let me just see if I can do this. And
No.
Hey Shelley, I say this to everyone, I'm going to make you the host.
Okay.
With the condition that you promise to give me back the channel when you're done.
Fair enough. It sounds like you have
And if you, and if you see anybody that's on their way in that they're in the waiting room, please admit them. I know it's late, but, okay, here you go.
Okay. Okay, that worked. All right. So I'm going to go. Okay, is everybody seeing the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, I'll get some right.
Okay, go ahead, Shelley.
Okay. So I want to tell you a little bit about the budget situation and what happens as we move forward depends on three things. Those three things are, we have an open position and have had that open since June, how we handle that. If we restore any of the cuts that we've made to the collection, technology and staff development and the degree to which we implement the staff retention and recruitment report, which I will talk about a little bit later in the presentation. So at our current funding levels, if we do those things, the library's reserves will be gone around July of 2022. So a little over a year and we will have to make some significant cuts. Those cuts include closing up to three days a week. Other things that the board could consider, we are legally required to spend $2,500 a year on books. We could cut to that level. We will be cutting programs ranging from the summer camps, storytimes, the book delivery we're doing to the senior living centers and some of those larger community events and then closing one to three days a week. If we partially, partially implement that plan, we could delay this impact until 2023. If nothing changes, that means we don't have a dime of additional spending. Health insurance doesn't go up, there's no cost of living and we keep our funding the same, the reserves will still be gone in 2024. So I know you have a lot of vets on your board who have a lot of background in this already, but I want to make sure I just do a quick how we got here. As you know, the joint library formed in 2003. The purpose is actually written into that agreement. And it says that local governments have the option of being excluded from the county library tax and in doing so can substantially increase local library funding and hence services. So that was the original plan, why these communities decided to come together instead of following a single municipal library. That didn't happen. Right away, the partners began to change the agreed upon formula to lower the contribution so they'd be less burdensome. But the big hit really is 2012. That was the year it was discovered that the library did not get paid $415,000 that it was required to receive from the municipalities. And you can see here on the slide, the amount for each of the municipalities. That was a little over $100,000 for the town of Hudson. So this amount, this $415,000 is more than half of what our current municipal funding is. So it was a significant amount of money. People have been asking me, well, how did that happen? How is it that that just didn't get paid? And, you know, a lot of the players who were involved in this are no longer here. But what I've been able to glean is that there have been changes to those minimum funding laws for libraries in the state of Wisconsin. And if it happened really quickly, I don't know, but the information did not really make its way from Madison to our four partners in the way that it should have. There is nothing illegal that happened. There's nothing malicious that happened. This is an oversight. And it was a very difficult time in the economy and rightly so, these communities and your representatives at the time where this is a significant burden. We can't just pass this on to our taxpayers. It's too much too soon. So the legislature did step in to help the communities. And their fixed means we weren't going to restore that funding. And we weren't going to keep the funding law. What they did is they changed the state law just for joint libraries to what we now know is the three-year average. Otherwise, we would have been going back to those county minimum laws that we're talking about all the time now. There are 28 joint libraries in Wisconsin, so there aren't very many and out of 380 libraries total. So among joint libraries, this is referred to as the Hudson's solution because it affected all of them, even though it was crafted to fix the problem here in our area. So I think this slide is helpful. I've got to move that around. What it shows is if the library had received the money it was supposed to get, that $415,000 back in 2012 and the partners had paid 2% a year after that, where would we be right now? The library would have $1.2 million in its budget. What we do have is 747,000 in municipal revenue. That's because the $415,000 was not paid upfront, nor was it phased in. It was just sort of wiped off the books and we went to the three-year average. So that is the difference. What would have been and where we are. I think this is the other slide that is is really helpful because it's hard to know what's going on in the other communities with libraries because we're a joint library and they are all single municipal libraries. So River Falls here, for example. As you can see, our municipal service size, because we're a joint library, is 30,594 people. That makes us the 32nd largest library in the state, which was phenomenal to me. 380 libraries were 32nd largest. We serve one-third of St. Croix County's population. River Falls is about half that size and you can see down the line, New Richmond being about one-third our size. So River Falls pays its library, these are 2019 numbers, $869,000. That's what comes out of the city budget for their library compared to Hudson, which is $350,000. And you can see the town of Hudson, followed by the town of St. Joe and the town of North Hudson. So when you add up the four municipalities, we're at about that $740,000. The River Falls library also gets almost $200,000 from the counties. We get about $69,000. And I just pulled those two out since that's our closest neighbor, but you can see the similar contribution levels from Chippewa Falls, Menominee, New Richmond and Rice Lake. That's why, you know, our per That's why, you know, our per capita funding is as low as it is. These are libraries in our region, their per capita funding, Hudson is the orange one. We're at the 2370 per capita. Menominee's not far ahead of us. They're also in that lower end. Average in the state is a little over $54. So out of the 380 library systems in Wisconsin, 361 of them get more per capita funding than Hudson. So where the money goes. We're sort of like schools or police departments in that it's the, the services and resources are delivered by people. So the biggest part of our budget is the personnel section. And there you see it there. The second highest amount, the 148, that is all related to the building, the cost of being in the building, the electricity, the heat, et cetera. So those are the two big categories. And you know, we do a lot of programs in Hudson and you'll see here that we don't have a slice of that pie and therefore programs. And that's because we fund all of our programs with grants from the Hudson Area Library Foundation. And the sales, the book sales that the friends of the library do. All of our programs are free, of course, all library programs are free. But these grants cannot be used to help us with our staff wages, insurance, water bill. They are specifically for programs. We have no tax dollars for programs. It's all grants. And that has really helped us maintain programs for the community, even when we've had problems in other areas of our budget. 2019, we got 20,000 people to library programs and we were hoping to grow that in 2020. And we've of course gone to a virtual model as have most libraries. So I confidently assert that the library does not have a spending problem. It has a funding problem. I've been asked, and I think this is a great question, is if this big chunk of money was lost in 2012, the $400,000. How have you continued here for eight years without it? So here are some of the things that we have done. 11 years ago, we spent almost $110,000 on the collection for books, movies, audiobooks, the collection. This year, we're spending $61,000. So money for materials has been moved into the operating expenses side. We've done the same with tech and staff development. We had $17,000 in our tech budget last year. We have 5,000 this year. We are over reliant on donations. I grew up in this area in River Falls when I moved to Hudson. From southern Minnesota, the library was closed on Sundays. So you know, we have reduced hours and then reinstated them and actually added Sundays two years ago. And we have been using reserves for our operating expenses. But the big piece of the pie that we've been working with to make it work has been through our staffing. The State Department of Public Instruction has library standards. And it sets out quantitative and qualitative ways to assess your library and what tier it is. A minimum service library is what every Wisconsin resident should have access to, a minimum level of library services. Then there's a higher tier called extended and the highest tier, which is called the highest level of service. So our size, our library, to be a minimum service library should have 17 full-time equivalents. We have 12.5. So how we have dealt with our budget is by understaffing and then also underpaying. We rarely hire anybody at a benefited level, including the amount that you get, just the contribution to Wisconsin retirement. And we've managed to keep staff wages really low and it was workable for a while, but we've really hit the wall. We've had 17 people leave in a year and a half. And if you've been a manager or in the business world, the cost of constant training, you know, is, it's enormous and the efficiencies lost are also enormous. So there are soft and hard costs associated with that. And our job postings, it's just not getting applicants. We had a couple of hires to make during the pandemic and thought that will be easy and it wasn't. We had literally two applications for one of our positions. The last two librarians we hired, we did not get any qualified applicants. I personally recruited two people who took those jobs. And that was luck. They're wonderful, but luck is not a business model and it's not a model to run a library either. So the salaries, Hudson librarians.
Shelley, if I might, this, this is done. I want to have plenty of time for questions tonight too, but do you have, do you have a lot of slides left?
I have, let me see.
I mean, we're about 15 minutes into this and I know that, I know the board is well versed at this, so I really want.
Four more slides.
Okay, all right. I didn't mean to slow you down, but I, I just, I want to make sure that we have enough time that you could dialogue with us and see where we could.
So, but this is important because there is a huge difference between $16.86 and $30, 10 minutes away. And the Twin Cities is in the $25 to $35 an hour range, 40, up to 40 at St. Paul. So that is certainly a huge challenge for us. I want to let you know that our board has endorsed this report. They want to get there to these proposed salaries. Given where we're at, they can't. They did bump up librarian salaries to 1850 this year and also adopted a PTO plan, which has been a phenomenal thing for our staff in 2019. The only person who got any paid sick time was the director. So our goal is to sustain what we were doing in 2019. Our FTE level then would be in that 13 range, so we still wouldn't come to that minimum service. But you know, we were happy with our performance in 2019. Our programming numbers were outstanding, circ- circulation was good. So that's what we're looking at. The cost of that is 1.18 million and our current budget, as you can see, is 910,000. 80,000 of that is coming out of reserves. So what the city of Hudson and the town of St. Joe, we're looking at is that 30% increase. Where would that get us? Well, it brings us to a little bit over a million dollars on our budget. I can come back to this slide. I just want to go ahead and I also gathered what each community pays us in their funding and then what everybody in those communities checked out from the library and what it would have cost to purchase those materials. So the total amount of materials checked out by everybody in the joint library, those people saved $3.8 million by checking out instead of purchasing. And oh, this we've talked about many times, last time I was here as well. The town of Hudson's five-year savings from getting out of that county tax has been about a half million dollars. Over five of the years. And this is just some return on investment data from some surveys and studies that have been done. And I certainly can send you this if you'd like to look at the slides later, but it's, it looks at basically, people think libraries are still just, you know, about books. And it's not your mother's library. The world, library world is very different. And these are some of the things and activities and resources that are provided at the library. So.
Thank you, Shelley. If you could give it, give the host duties back to me.
I will do that. Let me figure out who to do that here.
You just, I think if you just go to participants, you see me there.
Yes, there we go. It says participants invite. Oh, let me stop the share and see how that goes first.
There you go. Now, now it's back.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Perfect. So. Shelley, I know you have a lot of data to cover. I know, I know the board has seen this many times. Again, we've sent on all of your slides to them to, to review. Comments from the board?
I have a few questions. So I guess one of the concerns that I have is that, you know, for the, for the city of Hudson, their share of the library is about 3% of their budget. For us, it's about 23%. So it's a, it's a much bigger percentage of, you know, what's involved. And so I think, you know, we have to be careful about it. One of the things I'm wondering is, is you know, in terms of usage, you know, what, it seems like you have some data there in terms of, of, you know, how much is, the usage comes from the town of Hudson. But so what do we have as far as usage now compared to what it was maybe three years ago? What is the, and that's, that's overall as far as people using, you know, the, the, the library. How many of our population might be going to River Falls or to other libraries? Because it seems to me that as people are further away from the library physically, you know, they may be more inclined to you know, either use another library or, you know, go and, and purchase online. You know, their, the literature, whatever. So I think those are, those are concerns too. So I guess the question is, is whether the per capita is really a good method of assessing. You know, the, you know, our share. That's, that's one piece. Maybe you can answer those for us before we go on.
I would have to go in and get you, are your card holder data? And I would be able to tell you specifically, and in fact, maybe as we chat, let me see what I can grab right now. We are able to tell you specifically who, from the town of Hudson, how many of them came to ours versus River Falls versus Roberts. And you're as well taken about the percent of the. See here, if anybody has anything else, well, I'm getting, I think I will look at the 2019 numbers, because COVID has been, you know, it's really made everything so difficult. Okay.
While she's looking that up, do you have anything more, Dan?
Yeah, I guess. You know, we know that the, the, the library piece that comes in, you know, that's important as, as you point out. Hudson is getting, you know, a, a much smaller piece of that than even River Falls. And, you know, I, I don't know what the situation is that in terms of resolution of that, but you know, that, that essentially is a, a shortfall that essentially, you know, is being pushed upon, you know, the Hudson Joint Library people that, you know, is not, you know, doesn't exist, you know, for you know, people in Troy Township, for example, or whatever. So. You know, so what, you know, what are, what are you doing about that, I guess?
But if, can I just add something on that too, is the River Falls Library is served by, serves much more than 15,000 people too. That is the population of River Falls.
That's their municipal service area.
Yeah, that's exactly their municipal, but they have the town of Cliff, then the town of River Falls and the town of Troy, don't they?
That. That would be considered extended county population. And when people from outside your service area use your library, you get reimbursements from the county.
So, so are they getting reimbursements from Pierce County and St. Croix County? Good.
Yep. And that's why they get so much more county money than we do because we grew our boundaries when we became a larger municipal service area. Those people would have been coming to us outside of our municipal service area and we would have been reimbursed through the county.
But I think it's safe to say, most of them people are utilizing the River Falls Library, which in turns, in turn brings revenue into that library.
Yes, but that 869,000 is just from their city. They get another
Right.
75 from the county.
Right.
What those people are generating.
What I'm, what I'm getting at is the town of Troy, people in the town of Troy are gonna, are gonna run down to River Falls.
Mostly. It's kind of depends on where people work. What we find is a lot of people will come, stop at our library because it's on the way home. You know, a lot of that depends on where people are living, where Grandma and Grandpa are. There are all kinds of factors that people use to make that decision. So have your, no, I'll just let you know that out of, in 2019, the year-to-date circulation, the year circulation for the town of Hudson was 61,522. Of those numbers, 53,556 came to Hudson, to the Hudson Area Library. The second largest number went to River Falls and that was 4,121. And then the third largest is 3,240 CIRK out of Roberts.
Shelley, also on the reimbursement for when people visit our libraries. The percentage of what we get paid back for people visiting in, from what we get paid back here for, from St. Croix County is at a different rate than what River Falls gets paid. And would you point that out as well?
Yes. St., all the counties in the state are required to pay at least 70% their reimbursement rates. St. Croix County has opted to do 100%, which is really a wonderful thing and some counties are not doing that. But they are paying Hudson only 70%. So River Falls, Baldwin, Woodville, all of the other libraries are getting 100% and there's a long history to that. And it has to do with the joint partners. And the decision to stop reimbursing the libraries we said we'd give money to when we formed the joint library. And that happened after that $415,000 in 2012 happened. So the library quit paying River Falls, they quit paying Somerset, New Richmond, those extra dollars. And the county decided that it was a violation of, you know, I'm trying to summarize two sides as fairly as I can, but that the library and the communities violated an agreement. And they were going to withhold 30% and spread it to those libraries that we had said we'd pay, but we quit paying. So we are getting 70% of our reimbursement instead of 100.
Okay, Shelley, I appreciate you coming in tonight. I have several comments, Don. Yep, yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm not forgetting you. Okay. Go, why don't you go ahead, Dan?
Shelley, let me give you a little extra history. The agreement was in 2003. Guess when the levy limits were put on in the state of Wisconsin? 2003. And as a consequence, all of the rest of the county libraries can raise their budget wherever they want. And the county is allowed to raise their levies to cover that cost. And Schober did that to us in 2012 when he was the president of the library. And that's where that shortfall came from. Schorberg was also on the county board when all of that stuff came down about the 30% cut. Why he did all that, I don't know. But the bottom line is, I'll cover one other thing real quick. We're considered a rich community. We're considered a rich community. St. Croix County is. So as a consequence, our shared revenues are less than a lot of other municipalities. I'll give you an example. The city of River Falls gets $2 million in shared revenue.
I know.
The city of Hudson gets 212. The city of Richmond gets 466. Glenwood City gets 269. This, so they get more than the city of Hudson. The town of Hudson gets 75. Baldwin gets 240, and St. Joe gets 38. We have significantly less, plus the levy limit freeze. So I, boils down to, we haven't discussed any of this. This was not come up to our board for a discussion on what our actions are. My recommendation to the board in the future is, there's three options. Do nothing, no change. Go back to the county library or agree to increase. And the problem that we've got as a board, if we agree to the increase, let's say we give 60, to go to that 30% Shelley's talking about. If we give up $64,000, it's gonna have to come out of road maintenance. Because we don't, we're at a levy limit. The city is not. We are and have been since 2003. And as a consequence, if we ever go back to the county library, disband the joint library, we forever lose that $64,000 or that $100,000 when you go to 48%. So at this point, I think we need to strongly consider going back to the county library where you can get whatever you want, and you can raise it whatever you need to, and the county can raise the levy to our residents. We cannot do that. We're not allowed to do that within the state laws. That's the end of my discussion.
I completely agree.
I, um, yeah, I do know those numbers about the, the state aid and it's significant. Um, the disparities there are, are huge. You know, the, if we go back to the old system, the amount of money you were saving, that half, you know, $450,000 over five years, your taxpayers are gonna have to pay that.
Correct. I agree. But their levy can be raised to cover it. We cannot. So the only way we can cover that is take it out of other budget.
That's right. That is, it's absolutely 100% right.
The only way out of the discussion, Shelley, or, or borrow it. I mean, that's the only avenue we have.
Yep.
And, you know, and that's a declining, we're, we're the beginning of the end there. That's not gonna work.
Yes.
So, so we, we are in that conundrum with everyone else. We either have limited resources where we can take things from other critical avenues, or start going in the hole every year to deficit spend. I, I, I wanted to have come tonight so that the board and the community were aware of the constraints you're under, which I know are severe. I think it's important that we actively listen to it. I have no preconceived notion of what it's going to be other than, other than I think, I think we, as a board and a town, we've got to look at something in the future, but it's not sustainable, is my opinion.
I am, you know, I, I've been doing this for nine months now, and I do not envy the position that you're in because it is a no win. It is absolutely a no win, and I, that's really unfortunate. I'm just grateful, um, what we've been able to do thus far. I don't know what the future is gonna hold, but, you know, you're in a very tough position, and I'm, I'm very sorry for that.
Well, and so the citizens know too, if it does go back to the county, you know, probably our taxes at the county will go up, but, uh, you know, at, at least, at least the constraints that we're under there would be somewhat relieved. So. All right, I, it's my job as the chair to keep things moving along. I wanted to give you as much time as I possibly could. Any other comments for Shelley? Or Shelley, any other thoughts for us?
No, please.
Don?
There are things you'd like to talk about with me one-on-one. I'm happy to take those calls.
You're gonna have to be able to keep coming back and talking to the board in the future because this is going to be something that's gonna need attention.
Yeah. I, I do have a follow-up question, Don, if I could just ask one though, but.
Real brief.
We've got 60, 61, 522, she said, uh, uh, library visits by Hudson, uh, town, um, residents. And, uh, but 53, 565 have gone to Hudson. So, I'll work out that as far as a percentage, but let's just roughly say, you know, we're talking about, you know, a little over 80%. I guess the question is, is in the city of Hudson, I would expect that that's probably close to 100%.
It's higher for sure. Um, I would have to, they're on a different line here. Would you like me to email you some of this data? Because I know you're trying to cut your meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that would be fine. I, 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 I don't wanna, uh, labor it. Yeah.
Um, I'll send it to Vicki, a bunch of SPCR data and the percentages, and then she can share that with your board.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Chairman, Don.
Yes?
With, um, Marion on the line, it seems like he's got something to say. Would you allow him to speak to this at all with his experience being formerly on the board?
You know.
Or is that?
No, it has, it's nothing against Marion tonight. I just, we've, we've been at this so long now. If, if Marion has something, he can please get it to us and, uh, but I think, I think we're all well aware of the issues.
Yep.
All right, so that I want to move on. Uh, thank you, Shelley. I appreciate your comments. All right, Rob? Hello, Rob, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, you're a little bit like you're in a cave, but try it again.
I, I very literally am in kind of a cave with the, uh, I'm in the winery right now.
There we go. Okay. If you speak nice and loud, we can hear you and, uh, you, you fill us in as to what your request is tonight, please.
Sure. Um, I am seeking a Class B winery only permit. Um, I am a, uh, state and federally licensed winery right now. It's, uh, I operate under the name Fowler Wine, and we are in Hudson Township. Part of the reason I moved to, to Hudson Township was to start this winery, and the other reason was to take advantage of Hudson's great school district. So we are exiles happily from Minnesota. And so we wanted to start our agricultural-based business here. I am by trade a lawyer, um, but I hope to transition and recover from that. Um, and, uh, so winemaking has been my passion for, I started making wine in 2008. And, uh, so my goal has been to make wine that is, uh, on par with, uh, the California and international wines. I personally, um, enjoy those kind of wines, and that's the, the wines that we want to make here. So we're a little different than some of the other surrounding wineries. I do have about a third of acre of grapes on our property here that will be coming mature this year. One of the things I wanted to stress is that, um, by current law, we, you know, we can already do wine tastings, and we have. So the only thing we're really seeking to increase here is to be able to sell our wines directly to a customer after they, uh, stop by and, and sample our wines. And, you know, if they want to enjoy a glass and continue conversation about wine and winemaking. So we're only open by appointment, and we're not gonna change that. We, we live on the same property, so we don't want, you know, a whole lot of foot traffic coming. So we've made it very clear that we are open by appointment only. And it's, uh, that's not gonna change. And we're only, we only take, uh, appointments for wine tasting seasonally anyway. Usually in the mid-April to the end of October. Um, and then it's only on the weekends. So barring some special event, you know, we occasionally, something comes up on a weekday, but, you know, we're, we're already under limits for hours that we can be open. So in reality, I'm, I'm not really seeking a real big change in the status quo.
So, Rob, Rob, some, I, I did not get your application for this. How many acres are you on? Are, you're in a residential neighborhood, right?
Well, we're zone ag res, as you know. Um, we're on 2.5 acres.
Okay. Did someone mute whoever they have? All right, there you go.
That's, that's not me.
Hope, hopefully, I can, I can mute everyone here if I have to, but hopefully whoever else is on, please make sure you have your microphone muted, please. Okay, Rob, go ahead. So you had two and a half acres.
Yep. And about a third of that is, is under vine, which, that, that only produces about 100,000 pounds of grapes. But we, we, we import grapes from our growers that we've built relationships with for years, from California, Washington, and Napa Valley. Um, I process everything here. Um, have, have you not seen the application packet that I sent to the clerk?
I did not. I did not receive mine.
Well, I sent it a couple of weeks ago, um, and I supplemented that with a cover letter that was really nice and laying out kind of what we are and doing a nice formal introduction. So has, has, has none of the town boards seen that?
Okay, I apologize for that. I have not seen that.
Okay.
Okay, so, so Rob, we're real decent people here, so maybe we can start at more of a ducks and bunnies level here, or certainly I'll come back for another meeting.
Well, I, I would like to try to get this, uh, approved, um, as soon as I can. Um, you know, the season is starting. And, uh, you know, the weather's been really great this spring, so, you know, we were, um, looking forward to hopefully getting this approved tonight. I can, I can tell you this, um, you know, I've completed my alcohol service course. I sent that to the clerk today. Like I said, we're, we're already a federally and state licensed, uh, winery. We have been since 2019. I first applied for the permit, um, worked on it in the summer of 2019. And then, um, federal was first, and then a week later, the state of Wisconsin. And then after that, St. Croix County approved us for a non-hazardous food permit. So we already have state, federal, and county approvals, and we've been operating as a winery since, uh, September of 19. Now, of course, wine is not one of those instant products that you can produce. So right as soon as our white wines were becoming ready in 2020, COVID hit. And so, you know, I, I was sitting here bottling wine and knowing that there would be nobody to taste it for months. So, um, anyways, um, so it was, it was a difficult year, but we actually got through it, um, fairly well, considering, you know, our first year was opening during COVID. Uh, we have a strong word-of-mouth following. Like I said, because we're not open to public, people seek us out that want to enjoy fine wine. Uh, we are not, we're very different than all the other wineries because we're very small. And my sole goal is to produce award-winning wine. And if I can just, oh, I don't know if it's gonna show. So I have, uh, our first, uh, professional contest we entered was actually the, the largest, uh, professional contest in North America. It's the San Francisco Chronicle Wine Competition. And this is all California, Oregon, and, and, um, Washington wineries. And this little Wisconsin winery that we started in 2019 on our very first vintage, on our very first contest, received two double golds, a gold, and two bronze. All five wines we submitted won, uh, against the California wineries. I mean, it was a huge upset. And I'm, I'm really proud of what we did. Um, that's gonna be published out in San Francisco on April 4th. So, you know, we've, we've really come a long ways in just a short period of time, and, and that was part of my goal was, you know, to make wines that are, are really, you know, world-class, and we've already gotten there. So.
Rob, Rob, help, help us through this then. You're at two and a half acres. You have about a third of that in, in vines. Are you bringing in, Rob, stuff from other areas or?
Yeah.
You, you can't, how, how much wine can you make off of a third of an acre? Well, six tenths of an acre if a third of your lot is in, is in vines.
So, right. So we import 36,000 pounds of grapes annually from California, Washington, um, and now the Napa Valley. Last year, 2020, uh, I, I met a new grower, so I'm, I'm bringing in about five tons from actual Napa Valley. Like I said, I, I bring in two semi trucks. I unload them. We crush them here. Make wine right, right here. So we make, in total, our production in 2020 is 2,100 gallons, which is tiny. That is really small. 2019, our production was 1,500 gallons. So by comparison, one-third of an acre of grapes produces maybe a ton or 2,000 pounds. So it is, it is, um, you know, a portion of what we do. Like I said, my focus has always been on making more traditional wine than the hybrid wine. And so, yeah, I bring in two trucks a year. Um, these are from growers that I've worked with even as an amateur. Uh, so these are longstanding relationships we have with the growers.
Okay, and, and, and I'm just framing the issues up for the, for the board. I'm not taking an issue here either side, but you, you got this approved as a home-based business too? I mean, you, you've gone through all those hoops with us?
Well, so as far as the, the state of Wisconsin, like I said, I've received their winery permit. I've got the county's non-hazardous food permit, so I've, I've gone through the county. Nobody told me that I needed to do anything different for the township because the winery is regulated by the state. The inspector that came out from the county, um, you know, and I, when we converted this space, because we did a construction project, basically turning the workshop area of this property into a winery. We applied for a building permit with the county, or excuse me, with the township. That was approved, inspected. All this happened in 2019.
Questions of the other board members?
Um, I guess, when you're looking for this permit, are, I'm curious about, uh, you know, parking, you know, because now this is gonna be a, you know, a business. How this relates to your business as far as setting it up for people coming in and purchasing the wine?
Sure. So we have, um, so we already have the ability to do wine tastings. Okay, that's from our state permit. Okay, that's, so that's under Wisconsin Chapter 125. So like I said, this permit, what, the only thing it really changes is that instead of me having to tell a customer after they've been here to go on my website so that I can ship them wine or deliver wine, because I do have, from the state of Wisconsin, a shipper's permit. Um, so I can direct ship to a customer. I can even deliver it according to that permit. So the only difference that really is gonna happen here is that, um, from the status quo that's already happening is I can sell them a case of wine as they're leaving, and they can take it with them. Or alternatively, with the Class B, if, say, I have, you know, five wines that we do the legal one-out sample, um, they can then, you know, purchase a glass of wine to continue discussing wine or whatever, uh, if their appointment time allows. Um, so really, there's, there's, there's not a big change that we're asking for. We, we aren't open to the public, so parking, I know who's coming. You know, these are folks that seek out, you know, a fine wine experience. They're not, I've yet to run into any intoxicated persons in my year of dealing with people. This is, this is a different cultural thing. And so we didn't want the general public coming here. So we didn't want the hassles of all that. So what we did was, and I have a giant parking lot. I can fit eight vehicles of my parking, um, right on my, on my lot.
So, Rob, I, I just think, um, you know, listening to the other board members, I, I think we really need to see your package, and may, maybe we should schedule this for the May meeting. But my, my, my overriding concern is A, A, I didn't know about this. And B, you know, we are replete with home businesses that are allowed in our ag residential areas. And, uh, you know, some, simple things that you can do there. But, uh, I guess I'd, I'd want to know what, what you converted and what your, when you say a parking lot, it could, it can't be more than just what your, your residence is, because most of these would have to be in a commercial-type setting.
So again, I did submit a full, I submitted a full packet to the clerk a long time ago with diagrams and copies of my federal permit, all the applications, the, the, the blueprints. I, I put all that in my application.
And I have all his, I have all his application. You guys have never had the actual applications. I don't give out the driver's license, whatever. He does have permits from the state, but this is about a Class B license.
So Ricky fellas in on a Class B license. Because we
A Class B license issued to a winery authorizes the sale of wine to be consumed by the glass or in open containers on the premises where sold, and also authorizes the sale of wine in original package or container to be consumed off the premises where sold. It does not include beer or alcohol or liquor, intoxicating liquor, but it's wine. It's a Class B license. It's like what all the bars have, is a Class B, but his is wine only.
Well, I guess, I guess
So once you give out a Class B license, you can't restrict the Class B license.
That was going to be my question, to say, well, you know, next year we'll have it by the glass or next year it's expanded to a, you know, Bella Vista or whatever it is down in Troy. I mean, these wineries and the breweries and that are in areas that are much more conducive than driving through a residential neighborhood.
Okay, I understand the concern with this, but I have literally taken every step to minimize impact to my neighbors and my family and those that are here. We're open by appointment only. We're open seasonally. And this is, I only have the capacity, but my entire tasting room, you know, can only hold 25 people if that's everybody jammed in. We're not, you know, experiencing the foot-train of Bella vines. We are completely different types of wineries. That is not the experience here. People contact us to learn about wine and taste some good wine that is made completely different than the other wineries around here. It's just, we're an ag business, so, you know, the zoning here, because I do have and cultivate grapes, that's an ag business. My understanding was that that was an allowable business under the current zoning of AgRes, and I wasn't aware that I needed to do anything further for the township other than to apply for the building permits and the things that I did. And as, again, we already have the right to, under our state license, to do tastings. So I can legally pour one-ounce samples of each of my wines to any customer who, I mean, that's already where we're at, is what I'm getting at. The only difference that I'm asking is to be able to say, "Thank you for the tasting. Would you like to buy some of my wine and take it with you?" I mean, that's really what this comes down to.
And how long would people be at your tasting room?
Say that again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
How long would people, up to 25 people, be in your tasting room?
Well, I should say, that's the capacity. Our largest individual tasting group has been eight people.
You do understand why we're asking these questions. Most home-based businesses are, if you read through our ordinance, hey, you can have a small little sign. You could be doing accounting work, a hairdresser, something like that, that we look at even through special exceptions. But, you know, a third of an acre of grapes, and you're bringing in two semi loads worth of additional grapes per year, that's, to me, that's not something that's normal in a residential district. And I know the overlay is ag residential.
I understand. I read the ordinance though, and the ordinance talks about an agricultural-based business. Growing grapes is quintessentially an agricultural-based business, which we have, and the making of wine is an agricultural processing. And so, we fall squarely under your ordinances for a home-based business that is ag-related. I'm sorry, but I mean, that's my opinion at least. I read it before I invested in this. And like I said, after reading that, I didn't think there was anything further that I needed to do with the township. I got my permits. I got my state permits. I got everything lined up. I mean, more to your question, Don, these are folks that are making at most a two-hour appointment to come and learn and taste wine. Then they leave. Like I said, I've never had an intoxicated person here. These are folks who seek out fine wine, you know, and we haven't done advertising. We don't have a sign at the base of our, you know, driveway telling people to come up. We're just, you know, word-of-mouth and quiet.
Mr. Fowler, can I speak for a sec?
Absolutely, sir.
I did look at your website, and your website is pretty, I mean,
Thank you.
It looks quite nice and quite extensive. I guess, I'm not as concerned with whether you're an agricultural business, because you're right, growing grapes, I'm sure it comes out as an agricultural business. What I am concerned with is Nicholas Drive coming off Kelly Road, which is, I'm just worried, I'm just thinking down the road, if people really do like your product, are you going to have, like, operating hours? Are you going to be like a nine-to-five, appointment-only? I mean, if people really do like your wine, I know what wineries are like, and they do get busy. And yours will be no different than any other. So what I'm worried about is the impact on your neighborhood. You're on a court. The impact on your court, where cars are going to park. I know you've got a long driveway, but I know the court there is not made to park a bunch of cars. Those are just concerns I have. So I guess, number one, are you going to have operating hours? Is it going to be appointment-only?
So I would like to remain appointment-only, but again, maybe I'm not being hurt of
But I guess, but I guess with demand, I mean, right now, maybe you don't have that demand, but I can see down the road, I like beer, and I like going to breweries. If I find out there's a little brewery in the neighborhood, and it has good beer, I'm going to go find out that brewery. I don't see it any different with wineries. And I've been to wineries, and I can see where you would have some success, where you do have the demand, where it would grow too big, where the neighborhood would, could maybe, it could cause harm to your neighborhood.
Which is the last thing I want to do, is cause harm to my neighbors. I like my neighbors here. They like, you know, we get along, and that's why we've been doing this by appointment-only. Ken, if you've been on my website, there's a "Visit Us" section, okay? And right in there, we tell people that this is strictly appointment-only. My wife would be very unhappy with me if we had people just coming up unannounced. We make that very clear, not only in the website, but every communication on our Facebook, that this is an appointment-only business. If you want a written, as part of my permit, that, you know, I submit to these hours, you know, absent some, you know, pre-planned special occasion, right now, we've only been operating Saturdays from 12 noon, and our last appointment is like at 5 o'clock. That's what we've been doing Saturdays and Sundays. And I don't think we're going to get to the point where people are going to be beating down our door. I think it's more, more to the idea of, okay, let's order a case. As Ken, you can see from the website, we have ordering capability. And, but occasionally, you know, we do have a nice picturesque setting. I built an outdoor tasting area with an outdoor kitchen, water, you know, all that stuff, so that people can sit and enjoy a glass of wine outside, under the shade of our pergola. And it really is a nice professional setting. You know, I didn't spare any expense with that. But, you know, that's, you know, for two hours, that's enough for wine. You know, we're not, it's, you know, taking the alcohol course as recently as I did. You know, it's up to us to decide, you know, if this is your tasting hours, and, you know, we can make you head-on out when you're done, you know? That's the goal here. It's not, I don't want to be a bar in the neighborhood. That is not my goal. And so, I don't know how else to make that more clear, that this is, you know, by appointment, people seeking us out to taste the wine and then bringing it home. That's, this is not a party zone. This is not a bar, you know, a bar setting. That's not what we want to do at all. It's just, it's incongruent with the wine culture that I know. You know what I mean?
No, I appreciate it, and I, you know, I like, I'm not against you trying to make a dollar or the business end of it, you know, it's your passion, and I just, I worry about it being on the end of that street with what could be increasing demand for your wine. You know, maybe right now, it's not that slow, but maybe down the road, it does pick up. And, you know, there's 25 cars a night driving down there, and then the neighbors have a problem with it. So those are just thoughts I have.
Right. I would have thought that after being open for the tastings that we've started, basically as soon as, you know, the court lifted the prohibition on the bars last year, we were open all summer, and we just had private, small groups. You know, I'm sure you would have gotten a complaint from one of my neighbors if they thought that we were doing, you know, the noise, traffic, all that stuff. My neighbors have been pretty supportive of this. They like wine, so, you know, that's kind of a nice thing. But, you know, this is, all I can do is stress that this isn't going to change the status quo from what's lawfully allowed right now. You see what I'm saying? I just want to be able to sell a customer a case of wine after a successful tasting.
Don? Yes. If I can interject at this point, if we start issuing Class B licenses all over an ag residential, and I get what you're saying, Mr. Fowler, you just want to be able to sell them a case of wine, but they have the capability of ordering it and having it shipped. I think you haven't changed anything other than you're now opening, if you will, a sale of alcohol, which I don't think we should get in the habit of doing in ag residential environments, not in commercial. Just, it's a bad practice to start. I don't understand why the state gave all these permits to you, and they're doing that. It's not your fault. They're doing that. I don't believe the town of Hudson should get into the business of handing out Class B licenses to people to start selling product out of their home.
I totally agree with that.
His business is legit. A winery is okay. His winery is okay. It's the whole issue about a Class B license.
Right. That's where we, we are so diligent in who we give those to or who we allow have them.
Rob, you have your stuff up.
Yeah, I wanted to wait my turn, sorry. Well, folks, I mean, I'm kind of disappointed by the response here, and I'll tell you why. This is not going to change the status quo. I am, there is nothing, frankly, that the township can do to stop me from having a wine tasting and pouring one-ounce samples because the state of Wisconsin's license allows me that right. I am licensed. It's like saying, "Let's put the baby back inside the womb." We're here, okay? We're already out, and we're going to continue to do tastings. You're making it extreme. The only thing that is, this feels like such an anti-business thing here to say that, "Thanks for the visit. Now, please go to a website" so that I have to spend the money and charge you money to ship you the wine rather than you physically taking a box of wine with you. That is really the only thing I want to be able to do, is to be able to have the customer leave happy with some wine that I spent a year and a half making from grapes. And to me, like I said, we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater here because we are going to continue to operate this way. And frankly, I didn't think there was anything that we were doing wrong because this is already built into my permit. So the only thing that we're being handicapped here is to not have a customer leave with wine that I literally am watching them consume and taste, and then they're going to have to go to on the website and order it, and I'm going to have to ship it to them.
Let me see if I get this, Rob. You understand everything, and so do we, and the only reason you're here is because you need that permit from us to be able to sell it to them. And we're telling you, "No, we're not going to give you that." What part of that are we both not understanding?
Well, I don't understand the logic behind it, because like I said, you're already giving, we already have the ability to have people over, so if the traffic is a concern, if the
Rob, I can help you with this.
I would love help. I would love help.
Okay. I'm just going to circle back one last time and then do this. If we could table this tonight, and you could come back to the board. Many of us were on the board when you got these licenses and permits. I had no idea, as a board member, that you were converting a workshop to a winery. So if you have state permits that allow you to do that under AgRes, and they might be thinking a winery, but not a Class B liquor license or a Class B license to sell alcoholic spirits, that's a far cry from what we're looking at in residential neighborhoods. And if the definition of a winery is one-third of a two-and-a-half-acre residential lot, I think someone might be pushing that envelope too, as to what a winery is. And if a winery is, I bring in two semis a year and 36 gallons of, 36,000 gallons of grapes, and processes in a workshop that's been converted to a winery that none of us on the board knew about, and now you want a Class B license to have up to 25 people that have tasting there, and your neighbors like it, I think you need to come back and talk to us because for tonight, that, I have been here for 43 years, and that is not a good use to have in a residential neighborhood.
Don, his winery is legit. That is, it is permitted under state law.
Correct, but not
The issue here is a Class B. We don't care about the winery because we don't have a say over it. The issue is a Class B license, which you cannot restrict.
And if we, now, here's my, you said this in good humor. You said you're recovering attorney. I'm even willing to have our attorney look at this and say, perhaps there is something that could be so restrictive that you could only, we could restrict you to the point where you could come up and pick up a case of wine and leave. But if what Ricky's telling us is true, I don't see how this is workable tonight.
You cannot restrict the Class B license. You can't make that a stipulation on his, a Class B license is what it is, what I just read. That's at the actual statute. So you have to decide if you want a Class B license at 7:45 Nicholas Drive.
Well, I know some of us have an excess of 20-some acres of land surrounded by residential neighborhood, and I think they would have kittens if we said we were just going to do this and start issuing Class B licenses. I think it's a very bad precedent.
There is another option here. My understanding is that there is a Class A license, which basically only allows the off-sale, in other words, you take it away, license as well. And my understanding is, if all the other criteria are met, a Class A is a little different than a Class B. I'd be willing to go to a Class A, but I need to be able to make, I need to be able to let a customer leave with product. You know, that, again, I'm not asking for a status quo of what is already legally allowed, and I just want to be able to sell wine to a customer. It's already going to be here.
Mr. Fowler, would you be willing to come back in May to give us, that we could put this on the agenda for May, so that we could look at a Class A and what this might do?
He would have to apply for a Class A. It has to be published. It has to be on file. I mean, so you have to decide on a Class B right now. That's what he applied for. That's what was noticed in the paper. That's what was all published. It had to be on file for so many days. So you have to decide if you want a Class B in an AgRes, you know, at 7:45. Do you want to issue a Class B? That's what you have to decide. Then if he doesn't get his Class B, then he could reapply. It would have to be on file for 15 days. Has to be noticed in the paper. Again, just like this one, the B was.
Can I ask that this be tabled then for one month? I would like to be able to have, you have the full packet that I submitted as the deciders of my fate here. I would really like you to have that information.
Well, most of that information is going to be redacted because I can't give out most of the information anyway. That's why it's, the issue here is not the winery. The winery is legit, legal by all means. He has all the permitting he needs through the state. It has nothing to do with the town. What is at, on the table tonight is a Class B license at his address. And that's what you have to decide. If you want a Class B license at a home.
Don, I'd like to make a motion that we disallow the Class B wine license.
Don, I'd like to make a motion that we disallow the Class B wine license for Rob Fowler at seven forty-five Nicholas Drive.
Do you hear a second to that so we could discuss it?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made to disallow it. Motioned and seconded. Tim, your feelings on that? If you're delaying it, you're just delaying the inevitable, or what are your thoughts?
That's correct. Because I don't think we, I'm okay with him having his winery and doing his tasting. I'm just concerned about selling winery in a residential area. Buy the bottle, buy the case, whatever. It's just, no. Go ahead and have your tastings and do all of that, Rob, but no, I don't want you selling it out of your residence. That's a business. What you're running is a winery right now. And the state gave you a permit to run a winery, not to run a liquor store selling product. And that's what you're asking for in a Class B license.
I suppose in that broad sense, you are correct. I'm asking for the ability to sell a customer wine that's already going to be here. I would have, I am extremely disappointed. I put a lot of effort into this. And, you know, we're not just making hooch here. We're making stuff that rivals California wineries. And we're making a name for Hudson. I'm dismayed. You know, I fled St. Paul, Minnesota, okay, because nothing's allowed over there, okay? I'm in Wisconsin now. My wife's a Wisconsin native. And I just honestly feel like the common sense of expanding the status quo from where we are right now to letting a customer leave with wine. They could come here and drink my wine. They could sample my wine. We can talk about the wine. I can show them what's made. And they can learn something, but they can't take it home. Instead, they have to go to a website and make me ship it to them? That doesn't make sense to me. And I, I was just hoping for a little bit more understanding. And I would like to bring you customers that can talk to you about how their experience is and like my neighbors, if you need to hear from them. But now, when you haven't even seen my full application, I'm just very disappointed.
It's not about, Mr. Fowler, it's not about the product. It's not about what the quality of product. It's, it's the liquor license per se of selling liquor in a residential area. It's like opening up, and you're seeing it in a different perspective, and we're looking at it, the whole community, like opening up a little liquor store, even though it's just wine in a residential, and that opens it up for anyone down the future. So we're trying to look over the whole township here. And we're not just going after you. We have to look at the whole township as a whole. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we're looking at a precedent here. You know, we would love to see your business flourish, Robert, so I think that.
Impossible. I can't sell a customer.
Yeah, I know. I know. There's gotta be a way around it. I'm not sure, you know, how to do it. If you, if you can work in, you know, in partnership with someone else or whatever as far as, you know, the sales, but we, I don't think that there's such a thing as a Class B license in a residential area in Hudson. I think that's the issue and.
Go ahead, Dad. I need to interrupt you.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're dealing with, you know, so it's a, it's a whole, we just don't have a, a way of dealing with that animal.
And Rob, Rob, we don't know the state laws on that. I don't know if there's an arrangement where you could work something out with Pitchfork Brewery and they can go and pick it up there because it's in a commercial area with a Class B. I don't know how those distribution things work.
I was gonna say, if this was a business off Highway twelve and you're working out of your house and you open up a shop down off Highway twelve, it would be a different conversation for me. But in a neighborhood, even if, even if most of your neighbors agree, there might be that one that doesn't, and it sets precedence as soon as we okay it.
Precedent, the precedent, precedence is where we all have an issue here.
I understand. It's just, you know, this is a unique situation. The state says I can have a winery, okay?
It's unique for us too.
And I'm just, I, there's gotta be a different way. I mean, I guess I'll have to talk to my attorneys in Madison, which, you know, they know alcohol more than I do. I don't practice in this area. You know, this is not my forte. I defend cops for a living. So, you know, I mean, I don't know, but.
Then for tonight, I'm sorry, Rob, I do want to move ahead. I'm not, I guess I am cutting you off. There's been a motion made. It's been seconded in terms of the discussion for the board. Any other discussion amongst the board members on this? All right, and I would just echo the same thing on precedent. We have nine thousand people in our town. I understand all the arguments for moving from the Twin Cities here to have more open, less restrictive things, but we're becoming more urban all the time. And it's a very bad precedent. And if we start on one, they're gonna use that as a lever for the next.
Well, I'll apply for a Class A then because I think there's, if I'm not mistaken, I'll reapply for a Class A. I think the Class A has a little bit more restrictions in terms of whether or not if the rest of the statutory criteria, but no matter if it can be denied. So I'm looking at that. I'll reapply. Like I said, I'm extremely disappointed.
Okay. Any other discussion amongst the board? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, motion's carried. Okay, well, I didn't plan on that long a discussion, and I was trying to be very judicial on time tonight, but Sonia, you've been very patient. I'm gonna move you up for your Growing Wings presentation. And you've heard the discussion tonight, and just a quick discussion point. As you can see, the board wrestles with many issues under our zoning laws. And we look at what's permitted and what is not permitted. Sonia has submitted a concept. I asked her to come in, a concept only. She hasn't been to the planning commission to come in and talk to us. She's looking at a commercial parcel of land that is at Highway twelve and County Road UU or Badlands. It would be directly north of the proposed Boosters Ballpark. And it would be for a adult group home for part of it, which is not a permitted use under our ordinances today. But I spoke with her offline that, you know, we would have to look at amending our comp plan and our permitted uses and our issues. She understands that. And the only reason I'm talking at all is I just, because it's eight o'clock at night, I want to be efficient. And Sonia, when you have the need to show something, I can, I can hold up my camera to show that for the people who are with us tonight. So Sonia, with that? It's all yours.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I will try to keep it quick and just stick to a quick overview on what we're looking at here. I appreciate your time tonight, Don, and the rest of you. I know your agenda was full. So my name is Sonia Howard, and I am here tonight to propose an exciting new establishment named Growing Wings. The inspiration for this establishment comes from my daughter Danielle and her peers. The idea comes from the twenty-seven-year experience of raising a beautiful soul who's trying to live beyond her means. Danielle was diagnosed with cognitive disabilities at ten years old. When I received this diagnosis, I honestly had no idea what it meant. So I asked the doctor, and he stated, "It's a nice way of saying your daughter is mentally retarded." He went on to say she will plateau at a second or third grade level and will never be able to live on her own as an adult. Once I had this diagnosis, I found out after ordering her birth records that she had lost a significant amount of oxygen to her brain at birth. Without having this information, I started questioning her development before she was one years old. The doctors pushed me off until I demanded testing for her development because I found out the state is responsible for the education of our children from the day they're born. I was granted testing, and it was confirmed Danielle was delayed for her age and speech, fine and gross motor skills, and overall development. Danielle's been in the Hudson School District since she's been four years old. Hudson has an amazing special education program with the most caring staff who help parents and the children in need to grow and learn during the time they have them. Danielle graduated from Hudson High School. Hudson is her home, her community. She's such a social butterfly. She knows so many people in this community, I can't even keep up with all them. I have strangers that come up to me and tell me how Danielle brightens her day. I thank them and I smile because she brightens my life. Danielle's been diagnosed with cognitive disabilities, however. She is able to know she's different than the mainstream, and she is able to strive to walk next to them. Danielle and her peers currently living in the Hudson community need the extra help learning in life and living skills that most of us are able to self-teach or quickly learn by others. An example of this is in elementary school at an individual educational plan meeting. It was suggested that I buy Danielle strap-on shoes because she would never be able to tie them. I refused to do so and requested that her already scheduled two hours per week of occupational therapy sessions are dedicated to teaching her to tie her shoes. They worked on this every session for four years. One day in the seventh grade, Danielle could tie her shoes, and now she will be able to for the rest of her life. Growing Wings is a type of community-based residential facility. It will function as a learning center with a group home environment for individuals who are diagnosed with mild to moderate cognitive disabilities. The combination of this learning and living environment will help these individuals gain the skills they are capable to functionally grow, live their fullest lives, and contribute to our community. This type of living and learning environment's not currently available anywhere. Growing Wings will offer personal growth plans for all clients, education of all daily living and life skills, including household chores, personal hygiene, personal goals, all these things we don't even think of that we do on a daily basis. We'll help them with work and volunteer, social events and more. We'll have a safe and secure building, commons area and outdoor area. We'll provide short and long-term care. Growing Wings will have experienced caring staff, which will include a special education teacher, interns, and people who live with or work with in the special needs environment. On this land, we have the capability to place four buildings, which initially will help ninety-six adults grow and contribute to our community. Four of these buildings will also create eighty full-time jobs. Each building's approximately twelve thousand square feet, will have six four-bedroom units, and each unit's approximately twelve hundred square feet. Each client will have their own bedroom and live with three other roommates. The building will be staffed twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. The building is the home to the client to gain the living skills they desire to grow to their fullest potential. The need for a safe and educational living environment for adults with intellectual disabilities is here. The number in the Hudson School District alone has grown two-and-a-half percent since two thousand and eleven. Currently, twelve point six percent of our high school students have special needs. This means in the high school alone, there's approximately two hundred individuals who will be turning into adults soon who have an uncertain future because of the unavailability of safe and independent living sources in our community. Growing Wings will provide a safe, structured educational and living environment for the members in this community who need us. Growing Wings will advocate for these individuals and give them the opportunity to live the lives they deserve and want to live. Growing Wings will enrich our community by allowing our adult children with disabilities to grow and contribute. I believe this land is a perfect spot for Growing Wings. We have residential right behind us, Trinity Lutheran Church on the corner, and the Hudson Boosters who offer programs to people with special needs is right next door. We are proposing that the front two lots closest to Highway twelve be zoned as commercial where we believe we can make an arrangement with the Hudson Lacrosse Association constructing some type of rec center. We would like to start as soon as possible. The first thing we would do is construct the main road connecting Roberts Lane through to Highway twelve, as shown on the engineering map supplied. We would tie in the new road around and over Hudson Booster's log. Then we'll start construction one building at a time. In the meantime, we'll gather client applications and work with the Hudson Lacrosse Association on the front two lots. My husband and I have the business plan together and currently have lenders who have watched us grow in the construction industry for the past twenty years, who are very excited to compete for our business with this new endeavor. Our community and the very special people in it need Growing Wings. I hope you will support us. The end. Questions or concerns?
Thank you, Sonia. That was extremely concise.
Forgive me for my emotion in it. It's a heart-tugging story.
Great job. I'm going to, this won't be fancy, but I'm going to just switch my camera here. And for the people in the audience, I'm just gonna show them. I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. This is, this is on the left side of your screen, this is Highway twelve going north. And on the very bottom, this cutoff would be Badlands. And that would be the Hudson Boosters property. So what they're proposing is you would come north onto Highway twelve, enter at the existing entrance. I don't know if we'd connect that road or not. I mean, that's something the engineering people can look at. But this road would be built over to the existing residential neighborhood to tie that together. And then depending on their phasing, you'd start with one, I think you said a twenty-four thousand square foot building.
Oh, they're twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand, little over twelve. Twelve, okay. And then, and then you would have up to four of those. And then a future road to come down to the Boosters Ballpark.
Actually, I believe the construction would have that first main road tie that Roberts Lane from the residential to the highway. And then we would immediately put in that road because we would need it for the buildings to go around so that the building has either wherever, which other building is first and where it sits, you'd have to have a road going each way. So I think that road would have to come in after the mountain.
Well, we know roads are very expensive, so we'd make sure that you can design them and pay for them. And then there'd be two, two commercial lots potentially out on Highway twelve. Is that, is that it before I leave this, Sonia?
That's about it for now. Yep.
Okay, all right.
We also do have the plans for the building drawn up, which we submitted to, and we're still getting a few revisions on. I think it turned out absolutely beautiful, and the architect was able to get my design down to help these individuals comfortably live. And it's really inviting the outside of it as well. Sorry, did I lose connection?
Nope.
Questions of Sonia? From the board?
Yeah, Don, isn't that Zoned Ag Residential, that, that, that area? Did that get rezoned? I thought that was Ag Residential in that area.
No, that's commercial.
She's right.
Ag Residential now, but the, the long-term plan was is that that would be a commercial use area.
Okay, so it hasn't been, it has not been rezoned commercially yet?
No.
I think, I think that's the way to characterize it. It's guided commercial in our long-term comprehensive plan. The interim holding overlay is ag res, which is always. The interim holding overlay is Ag Res, which it's always been. And as these uses come in, they would, it would have to be rezoned to that future use. Of, as I've read both the commercial and the Ag Res, I don't, an adult special ed, fully staffed. Facility like it is not a clear permitted use. It doesn't, doesn't mean we can't amend. Our ordinances to have a permitted use. We've done that through time, but it's, it's not in there today.
Okay, and Don, I, I unfortunately my. Reception went out. I had to re-enter. I did not hear Sonya, what are the plans? For the west end of this property closest to Highway twelve?
That is where we would like to, so the Hudson Lacrosse Association put a bid on this land before we did and we've. Our, both of our kids have been, grew up through the Hudson Lacrosse Association. Um, so our plan would be to work on something with them for some type of rec center because they're very in need of. Something like that. Um, we have no solid plans for that. We just believe that it would tie in nicely right there.
If I can say, Don. So Sonya, this, it's a wonderful idea. But it doesn't meet our zoning anywhere in the largest capacity of any structure that we allow in the town. An Ag Residential or Commercial is duplexes. This concept really lends itself more to, to sewer and water. Which is in the city, not in the town of Hudson. We can't get sewer and water out here until the land is annexed. So just, I'm sorry, it just doesn't fit in the town to put, to allow that as a permitted use in Ag Residential. On, on sewer and water, on, on septic systems. It just doesn't make any sense to me. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. I don't think so.
I guess the way that I seen it was because it was going to be, well, when I spoke with the county. And obviously everybody has different ideas of zoning, um, but I was told it could. Typically pretty much be in residential, multi-residential, commercial, um, obviously depending on the town. Um, being that, I mean, church is kind of a commercial entity. Um, there and with the Hudson Boosters and stuff like that, I just, and the residence behind and the commercial across the road. Um, I kind of saw it as fitting more as a commercial and a new development and actually building. The town.
Sonya, and, and I actually, the property that is across that would be west, that would be the farm. That's still farmland there, that is not commercial in that area either.
Okay, so just right down the block a little bit.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think what Tim notes as far as the septic and so forth, the wa- uh. Water, I mean, that's, that's an issue, you know, with that number of people. We have been thinking in terms of maybe even a frontage road along there, you know, if there's commercial development along that. So that makes that, uh, that, that kind of resets, that would kind of reset the whole plan, you know, for that area as far as. Future commercial development. So those are, those are the, uh, probably some of the biggest issues. I think the, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a great idea, you know, to, to have it and, and it does seem like it would fit better though closer to, to the city.
Um, well, I mean, the exit forest right there, Vine Street's right there, that ties us right into the city. And I get the point that the water and the sewage and stuff like, um, that. But I was also thinking that since you were looking at long term going towards commercial, that it would be something that. Could be worked out and the engineer. Had broke it all down. And, and that part I can honestly say I'm more on the business side of the Growing Wings. But as far as the development of the land, but I believe the engineer was working all that out to set it up. For all septic and well for all four buildings.
Have, have you looked at other land around the area, uh, in, in the township or?
I've been looking for land for about a year now and this was. First of all, I wasn't originally honestly planning on buying a lot of land, maybe start a little, um, but to me. After doing more research on the need and how large and the numbers that I gave you were just strictly Hudson numbers. It's not even touching the county numbers, um, people with special needs who come and live in our community. Um, so the need is there. It's, it's beyond there. Um, so I was hoping because of the engineers thought that they could set it up that way and that you were looking. Towards commercial, that it would be something we could work out and, um. Build each other, I guess, is the way I've seen it. And the fact of the matter is, is adding that development to the town of Hudson is. Adding, adding a lot of revenue to the town of Hudson as well.
Ken, let me just, let me just circle back. I, I, I want to compliment Sonya on all the work they've done. I, I shared with her, you know, one, one of the reasons we have these concept meetings is so that they don't have to expend. Tremendous amount of engineering dollars on this. Uh, you've seen their construction documents. I'm sure that. Physical building could go anywhere. You know, you, you mentioned there'd be about ninety six residents and eighty staff, if I heard that correctly. So you're looking at about a hundred and. Seventy people on this seven acre site. Uh, I'm, I'm not trying to get into the concept plan. I, I don't know if we'd want that road to go through, you know, we, we did not do that with the. Hartman Development next to Arrow Building would, would have extended through the residential development. But I, I just want to keep circling back to high. The high, higher principles here of, uh, if, if we would decide to do this as a community, then where there's many. Many meetings and many revisions to our ordinance that we'd have to do. And I want to get the temperature of the board because I'm, I'm one person. Ken, Ken, I haven't heard from you tonight. Do you have any thoughts for Sonya?
Um, I'm just curious, each one of them buildings is twelve thousand square feet.
Yeah.
On, on seven acres. I don't, I don't even see a, I don't even see where you would have room for a. Any type of septic system with the parking lot and everything that you have going there. I mean, I.
The parking lots are actually bigger than what, or more than what they're supposed to be at this time. And there would never be that many people on site at one time. Um, but all of the septic, um, from my understanding was right off to the. Well, I guess it would be right along the line of where the Hudson Booster property line, um, meets all right along that line.
I mean, that's a great idea. I like your idea and your vision, but I just, I don't know. It just looks, looks like a pretty high density. Um, I mean, it looks like high dozen, density residential on a seven acre site. It just looks tight to me.
I, I guess again, I'm not the engineer, so that's what they told me how many square feet will fit. And that gives us ample room for, um, grass areas. Indoors, outdoors, around the whole area as, as well.
It would be business. It would be a for-profit.
Yes, it is. Yeah, with something like that, it has to be because we would, uh, we looked at both options. But to really provide the extra learning that our clients need, um. That seemed like the best way to do it, yeah. We have all of our performance and business plans in place and, um. So yeah, like I said, I thought because we're going towards the commercial, um, someday in the future. The commercial is already on the corner lot and, and I guess I kind of, we put our proposal in for that land. Kind of thinking it would go that way.
Thanks.
Other comment, Tim?
And the buildings are zoned or scheduled as I four buildings, more of a. Medical or institutional size type of building.
We would never allow apartment building in our, in our zoning in the town of Hudson. Your volume of people that you have there is similar to what you'd have in an apartment building. And as a consequence, I don't know how you could allow this to come in and then turn down multiple housing units. We don't allow that in the town of Hudson anywhere. And I don't think. The town is interested in doing that at this point in time sign. I got nothing against what you're doing. I don't, there's a need for it. It's just that, that is what we're doing in this municipality.
And I understand that and I don't see it as an apartment building. I see it as a living center. Um, one that helps grow the people in our community who need it. Um, we've heard many times before, um, we're only as strong as our weakest links. Um, so I guess I see it more as a business. Um, to help people gain skills, just like. Any other, um, I go, it is multi-residential, obviously, because you have twenty four people. In each building.
Sonya, do you understand what, I think a little bit of what Tim's trying to bring up as well is. In the township, you know, we have to have our own well and septic and he's. I believe if I'm putting this through Tim, that this might better serve where you could get hooked up to city water in sewer. Is that possibly, Tim, what you, where you're going? It's not, it's not, the idea is wonderful, but I'm just, I think he's saying that it might fit better where you could be hooked up to water. City water and sewer.
Correct. Got nothing against your concept of what you want to do, Sonya, nothing.
And I'm not taking it personally that way. I guess I'm just, I don't understand that aspect. I guess because the engineer is telling me that we can make that happen with the sewage and the well, so. So I guess that is the only thing that I'm not understanding is that he says that it can be done. And you're telling me I'm better off having the city water, which may be true cost wise. Um, but I don't see that as affecting the actual facility itself, I guess, and whereabouts it is. Um, but I understand if, if you guys think that it's not something for the town of Hudson or you're ready for, it's too large. Um, I, you know, I would like to. Continue forward with it, um, but I can also see your concerns. It is a large project. Um, and again, this land has the capability of four buildings. Um, it's not like we're gonna just throw them all up. So if something didn't work out, maybe it was three because. Um, was it, can I apologize? I, it's hard to keep track of everybody's names when we go back and forth. Um, the concern of having that many buildings on the seven acres or whatever it is. I think this is a sixteen acre lot though, so I guess.
Correct.
And the fronts are only two acres.
Your proposal was on about seven acres. I, I think the feedback from the board is good, Sonya, because whether, whether it would be on. You know, what, what is currently an Ag Res piece or if it's rezoned to commercial. I, I, I think I'm hearing from the board their concerns would be the same with having that much density on. A piece of property that is not serviced by sewer and water. But I don't want to put words in the board's mouth either. Is that what I heard?
That's correct.
Okay. This is, um. Any other comments from the board? Sonya, I think you should still keep talking with us. It would be nice if everything would have just lined up tonight.
Yeah.
I, I just, back to my guiding principles, you can come in and talk to us at any time on a concept plan. You don't have to go through the expense of surveyors and engineers. So if you find anything else. Town that has a glimmer of working or a downsized plan, come back in and talk to us, please.
Sure, and I mean, what could I do to change that idea? With resolving the water and the well situation. You're saying that the land can't support it?
Yeah, we, we don't see the plan on here for it, so, uh, I mean, it's hard for us, frankly, I think it would be hard to. I think the struggle is for the board members is to imagine how it would actually even work, but I mean, if, uh, if there was. If, if we could get some sort of submission on how the, where the, where the, um. Drain field would be and all of that, you know, I mean, that's, that's, that's another thing, but I, um, right now.
And I believe that's on the engineering map that we supplied. It shows the drains. Yeah, it shows the drain fields right down on the side of the boosters, um, all right.
Yeah, those are the storm water ponds though.
Yeah.
Water management ponds.
You couldn't have your septic underneath the pond, yeah.
Oh, that's a pond?
Yes.
Let me circle back, Sonya. You missed in the beginning, I said, we don't allow anything larger than a duplex in the town of Hudson. You've got multiple housing units with. Twelve to twenty four people in a building. We don't allow that anywhere. And as a consequence, we'd have to change zoning to allow that type of housing, whether it's. For a cognitive learning disability center or apartment buildings. And we're, we just haven't felt that that was something that we were interested in doing. I guess that's my point.
Okay, so your point is more just about the, you don't want anything larger than a duplex. And you see it as a complete residential facility and not as much commercial.
Correct.
Cause. So not institutionalized, just residential.
Sonya did an excellent job presenting. Your, your plans are great. It just doesn't look like things are lining up tonight. And I hate to say no, I hate to say no to people, so we're kind of.
I understand.
Banning, uh, whatever we are, not hitting it out of the park tonight. Yeah, I do have a very full agenda. Are there other, anything else you wanted to share with us?
No, not much more I can say about it. I appreciate your guys' time.
Okay, be afraid to come back and talk to us is my, my parting comment.
Thank you, Don. I appreciate all your help at this matter.
Thank you. Okay, um. Next item, discussion action on a permanent storage container building is, uh. Jamie Meyer's still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, do you have the ability to come on with, uh, video or just audio tonight?
We tried and it wasn't working. We couldn't get video and audio.
Okay, well, we've got great audio from you, so we'll, we'll just.
Okay, good.
Go through it that way, so. Why don't, why don't you share with us that the board has seen your, um, submittal package. We got to see it today. A few, few of us have driven past your house, so if you saw vehicles going out there, we weren't trying to case it to steal things. We, we, you, you've, you've listened to a lot of discussions today on how our zoning works. You know, we have things we can do like adding a separate driveway, but, uh, we're, I'm here to listen, but right now we don't have a. Storage container, uh, deal in our ordinance, but please, please share with us what you were thinking and then we can. deal in our ordinance, but please, please share with us what you were thinking and then we can discuss this.
Well, this all started because my mom has been trying to purchase a home for several years, but unfortunately land and property values keep increasing. So what we've decided to do is we are planning when road restrictions are up and we get all our ducks in a row with blueprints as we are going to remove our garage and add a living quarters for her. That being said, we are requesting the second driveway, so we have a place to put extra vehicles and equipment and stuff in the back of the property where it won't be an eye sore upfront. We've done some research. I've talked to Sunnyside Construction. They gave me a proposal on a storage pole barn per se and it unfortunately is not in the budget. We've priced out storage containers. We've looked online. We've reviewed, I think it's Mod International out of Appleton, Wisconsin, has done some HTV shows where they are using storage containers now for pole barn structures, residential, commercial buildings. What we're looking to do is use a couple of storage containers as the base of our structure, put rafters on it. It'll have windows and doors and garage doors. So it'll basically be a pole barn in a sense, but the structure what's going to hold the rafters would be the storage containers.
How how large a building are you proposing?
Oh. Forty feet long and if we put it and eight feet wide and we'd like to have fourteen to sixteen feet in between them.
Okay, so. Forty by thirty-two, maybe is a round number?
Thirty-two by forty.
Yeah. And and you said it would be just for for straight storage, no, no living? Some of your packages, homes and things that they make out of them, no, no one living?
We already know that we can't have living quarters in it, so but between my mom, her significant other, my husband, myself, we have two boats, three motorcycles, a car, two trucks and two SUVs. So I would prefer not to have eleven motorized vehicles sitting in the front of my yard.
We would too.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure my neighbors would appreciate that as well.
I think I think I'll just kind of drive to the heart of this issue too. I I think the issue for us tonight is that we don't have any experience or in our ordinance that I'm aware of that we allow for storage container buildings.
Yeah.
A couple of couple of months ago, we had quite the discussion on on the pods where you come in and store things temporarily. And we we as a board said, we did not want to have shipping container storage units in in the town. So I guess I'm, again, I'm going to throw this out to the board. I I don't, I don't see a clear path through here where this is something that we could even approve tonight.
Well, and we do have an, it is in our ordinance, chapter eighty-four, temporary storage containers that they need a permit and they're not allowed to be permanent. And they're not allowed to be part of a dwelling. So I guess.
For the for the C container, right, Ken?
Yep, for a storage container. And although I love the idea, I think the idea is very cool. I did look at the I have seen those shows and that where they do that and I think it's very cool, but it's I mean, our ordinance, our ordinance does say that eighty-four dash one temporary storage container shall be defined as a transportable enclosed box like container. So.
Um, Don, if I might speak, that was one of my concerns was we don't have any standards to go by from for something like this. We would also, in my mind, we'd have to speak with Brian. We're okay, when you bring something in like this, is it going to be put on a cement pad? Is there footings? But my my main thing is that we do not have specific standards for something like this, so it's not something I feel comfortable even voting on tonight because we do not have those standards.
Well, I I guess the question would be is could this be made to meet Wisconsin building codes? I don't know if we can or not, but you know, and what what that would involve, but I think that's the kind of input we need from Brian.
That would, that would be a good question for Brian because I would have a hard time believing that Brian. I I have a hard time believing that it would meet building codes. If it's but being not a living, as long as it's not living, it may, but as far as structure goes, I I don't know.
It seems like it would be solid, especially if it was on a cement.
It sounds like, but you don't know about load shift. I mean, I don't, I'm not an engineer. I'm not a building engineer, so. Or an inspector. So that would be questions that I think they would have to ask Brian.
Well, I don't I don't see, Don, how it fits our zoning. Ken points out that we don't allow containers. We're not against pole barns, if you will. They can put up a pole barn with the normal structure as long as they don't have any covenants in that development. I don't think there ever was any, which means just put up a pole barn.
Yeah, it'd probably be cheaper.
Yeah.
In the long run.
We did weigh the cost on that. We did weigh the cost of using the shipping containers versus just the building a pole barn and the cost was significantly lower to use the shipping containers. It would be on a cement slab. It would have electric run to it.
But I still don't see a path through our zoning ordinances to allow containers to be used this way.
I I don't either.
Temporary storage containers.
And we have no standards. Now, now we have standards in our commercial ordinance of hey, you have to have Wayne's coating and certain amount of glass and color and, you know, e- even I I'm sure these could be disguised with wood and everything completely around it unless you walked inside, you'd never know they were C containers. But again, we have no, we have no standards or no permitted uses to allow it. So this is kind of a unique evening today. Taking track of how many people were saying no to. It normally doesn't happen like this, but any glimmers of hope of how we can work with.
I don't, I don't know. I I'm I'm inclined to think of it as a former storage container, not a current storage container. But then it would still have to meet, you know, current building code, so that that would be the issue.
Yes.
Well, it says, it says in our code too, in the eighty-four dash two placement requirements and limitations. I mean, if you want to pick this apart, it says additionally, any temporary storage containers must be a minimum of five feet away from any structure on the property. Well, in this case, they're going to become part of the structure. So I mean, just that right there goes against what you're asking for. Like I say, I like the concept. I've seen the shows. It looks cool. It'll probably save you money, but our town at that does not allow storage containers on a permanent basis, whether they're part of a building or not.
Okay, completely acceptable.
Cool concept. I love it, but I don't know.
I think practically we should have a motion to deny this rather than table it or anything else. Is anyone would like to make that motion?
Um, I'll move to make that motion. That we are not going to allow the storage container building for Jamie Myers at five eleven Jacob's Ladder Circle.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. And for the Myers, same same advice, come back and keep talking to us.
And what about the second driveway? Can we still get approved for that or?
Unless the board has other feelings, it has to be fifty feet away from your existing driveway. And when I drove by today, other than maybe knocking down a tree or two, it looks, it looks like that's doable.
Yeah, it is.
And why?
Yeah, and.
Why do you want your second driveway?
Cause the plan would be to build a pole barn then.
Boy, I think what you should do is when you come in with that plan, then ask us for the driveway and we can do that correctly.
I agree with you, Don. I don't have any problem with the second driveway. I've come to accept those.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you so much. Anything else? Okay. I can't see you, so I'll wave goodbye.
Thank you.
Okay.
We need a motion to deny the second driveway request until they get a building permit or whatnot.
So.
I hear a second to that?
I'm sorry, can I?
Here, go ahead. Please ask your question.
I just, we were gonna, we were applying for a storage container permit as well for during construction. And that is part of the reason why we were requesting the second driver was to put that in back away from our residence.
So now I've got to ask you a question for driving by. I mean, it it looks like you have some areas in the back. From from what you submitted, it looks like your shed was going to go back in that low area quite far back there. Are you, you know exactly where that container would go?
Yeah.
The the temporary shipping container would go in that wooded area. We've already started clearing out an area for that.
Okay, and you're, and Ken, Ken was the accurate purveyor of our rules. You're you're well aware that those are temporary, right?
Yep, six months. Yep, we are well aware.
And we we had extended discussions on that, that, you know, we enforce that and and we monitor that, so.
Yep, we've already talked to the shipping container place out of, I believe it's Wilson and the renting cost and how they get it delivered and picked up.
Why do you want a temporary permit for that container?
They're built, they're at, they're they're turning their part, their garage into living quarters for one of their parents.
Let me just try and show you this. Here, here's their house. The black line is their at the driveway they're asking for this. We were assuming it's at least fifty feet from their driveway. They'd go all the way back in on that driveway and put a C container in the woods where their pole barn was proposed that we just denied. They're asking for a shipping container to be there.
Can I add something?
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Can I add something here?
Sure, please.
It's not six months either. It's a, it's a maximum of, it's a maximum of sixty days. If the container is used in conjunction with a permitted construction project, it shall be permitted to remain on the property for the time period of the construction.
Oh, I thought I read on the application that it was six months.
Well, that that it says in no event shall a temporary storage container remain on the property for more than six months. So if your construction, so if your construction takes longer than six months, that doesn't let you keep it longer.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, that's just clarifying a little bit.
Thanks, Ken. And then on that application fee, that's why we're asking for that application fee is so that we know when the container is going in so that we can monitor it for when it comes out.
After the road restrictions.
After the road restrictions are off, that's when we will be applying for our building permit and start construction as long as everything goes as planned.
But yes, but as long, as well as the temporary container on that application, we require a date of, so we know when that container is going in. And then we have something to follow back on as to when it comes back out.
So do I need to reapply then for the storage, the shipping container permit?
You would apply for the temporary shipping container permit when you get your, when you apply for your building permit so that Brian can them together so that it, then it's linked to your construction project.
Thank you, Vicky.
Thank you.
Do they, do you know yet when the road restrictions are going to come off?
No, I I shared that at the beginning. Could could be another two weeks. We don't know.
Okay.
So where did we leave it on the second driveway then?
We need a second on Tim's motion to deny the second driveway.
You hear a second on that? Dan, Dan seconded it? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of denying the second driveway as well, say aye.
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 All as opposed, no? Motion's carried? Okay, then the Myers.
Voted against it, Don?
I voted for it.
So everybody voted yes to deny it?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Just for the Myers, Don? I don't think, if you're just going to have that container there for sixty days, why don't you just store it someplace in your yard and not put a second driveway in? I I'm a little confused. Why you want that second driveway?
Cause they're going to build a barn.
Yeah, it's for the future purpose of building a pole barn. And again, we have vehicles that not in use. My husband works from home. I'd love to park his vehicle in the back if we had that second driveway. You know, it, when our boats are in not in use, I'd love those to be packed and parked in the back so they are not all sitting up front and being an eye sorter of the neighborhood.
So just to move it along tonight, you could still come back in and apply for that? Yep.
Yes.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
All right. I've done my calculations. I think I only need another two and a half hours. Actually, to lighten it up again a little bit, I'm going to move this up. Uh, this is number fifteen. This is the proclamation for looking at our appreciation for municipal treasurers. And I need board approval to sign this, which I hope is unanimous. And there's a proclamation from Governor Evers. And the proclamation is for Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week. It's going to be proclaimed the eighteenth through the twenty-fourth of April. I need your approvals to sign it. And I will read it because it's very brief, but it's very direct to the point. It says, whereas the office of the municipal treasurer is a time honored and vital part of local government that impacts day to day life of citizens throughout the state. And whereas a municipal treasurer is providing the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels. And whereas a municipal treasurer is administrator, administer the procedures and keep the financial records that allow governing bodies to carry out its public functions efficiently and confidently. And whereas all municipal treasures are officials, custodians responsible for proper management and investment of public funds. And here you go, in case you didn't know this, whereas the one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three municipal treasurers and the seventy-two county treasurers work together to collect all property taxes for their own municipalities and counties, as well as their local schools and technical colleges. And whereas a municipal treasurer continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibility of the office through the participation in educational programs, seminars and workshops. Governor Tony Evers assigned a proclamation on March tenth declaring April fourteenth to the twenty-fourth as Municipal Treasurer's Appreciation Week. And therefore, so I would entertain a motion that would allow.
So I envy, I envy that position and I could never do it myself. It would probably drive me crazy and I will make a motion for the signing of the Municipal Treasurer's Appreciation Week proclamation.
Right here, second. I second it.
All right, any further discussion on it? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? No one's opposed. And it was on the consent agenda, but also the clerks and the treasurer and the staff and poll workers. We had a resolution under H requesting that they be given priority for essential workers for COVID vaccinations. So we approved that as well tonight. So I just want to call that out. All right. Anything else before we move back onto the regular discussion? Okay, let me go, let me go to number eleven. Hopefully these will go quite quickly. Number eleven and number twelve are. Uh, number 11 and number 12 are tied, tied together. Uh, number 11, we, and you have these agreements. We have an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hudson and the town of Hudson regarding access control and joint maintenance of the portion of Old Highway 35 South from the Hamley intersection on the south to Stage Line on the north. It's a 10-year agreement. It can be reviewed every five years. Uh, the attorneys have put in there that, uh, they want to mutually work together, the two municipalities, and we're striving to have a shared driveway where the existing park and ride is. It's my personal hope that someday that the, that the town, uh, city will take over that park and ride, uh, but, uh, that was not quite ready to be part of this agreement. Uh, as a condition of that, we were promised, it's not in the agreement, that the city is going to use the existing, uh, zoning overlays. Uh, they will not increase the density, and they're estimating the dwelling units that would be approved if this driveway were to be approved is 66 dwelling units. So if someone would like to make the motion to authorize me to sign that, and I, and I would like it in the motion too, that it's an understanding that it's approximately 66 dwelling units uh, for that shared driveway.
Don?
Yes.
I need the request that we keep them separate.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, I checked with Matt Corbett. The county has no way of determining how to bill for cost that we agree in this contract for Old Highway 35 South to bill the city on a monthly basis. So if, if I would like to propose that the, the city plow from Canary Way s- south and the town plow from Canary Way north, but we can't do that until the attorneys go back and review it. We have no way of doing that billing process, Don, at this point, so.
Actually, we do. I, 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 we should have had this discussion earlier. If, if it ended up being in the final draft that it's monthly on the billing, it's, it's.
It did.
Okay, well then the attorneys need the, the final draft that should have, should have come out, should have said, as, as billed from the county.
How are you gonna bill? How are you gonna bill, Don?
Well, no, they, they were supposed to split the bill, right? That's, that's the way I understood it.
But how do you, how do you determine what the cost is? Most municipalities sharing the cost of plowing one road or another. They don't, they don't work out cost. The county has no way of breaking out what the cost is to plow a portion of our road in the town. That's what you're asking the county to do, Don. They don't have any way of doing that.
When did you talk to Matt Corbett?
Two weeks ago.
And you're bringing it up tonight?
Well, yeah, because it, it didn't make any sense to me.
Well, it made sense to two attorneys, the public works director, and, and, uh.
Oh, because the city was okay with that, because we were the one that had to try to figure that out, Don.
Well, then, then Matt is missing a conversation with Rob Kreisik at the highway commissioner level, because this has been a dialogue for close to two years. And, and I'm sorry, these agreements are, are negotiated. They're signed.
I know they are, Don, and I, I don't know how you think you're gonna do that. Tell me how you're gonna do that. You look at the county billing cycle to the town of Hudson. How would you break out a monthly billing for the section that only covers Old Highway 35 South? How many trips, whatever. I asked Matt if he could do that, and he just couldn't figure out how they could possibly do that.
We're gonna figure it out. And it's, if it needs to be amended, then it's not monthly and it's as, as incurred, we're gonna figure it out. Because we've been too long at this with the percentages. This is the first time I've heard of your concern at, uh, nine, nine, 10 tonight. So is there any other discussion on this agreement?
A new one that, um, the city dropped off, Mike Johnson dropped it off. So it just says, they, they did change it, so it's not monthly billing, but there is still a problem because it says the town shall provide supporting documentation such as the bills from St. Craig County, along with the invoice, that we're gonna invoice them. And I don't know how, I don't know how we're gonna get it. I mean, it's one thing if we're just doing, you know, a mill and overlay or whatever, like we did on Kinney and Daly and all that, because that is a separate project, but the everyday maintenance of that road is not broke out. And I, I don't know, I, I'm.
Everyday maintenance of that road today is minimal. The issue became, all right, what are the improvements that need to be done to that? There's language in there that will work down, sit down together and mutually work through that as to what needs to be done. There's language in the agreement that says they can go out and inspect it today to see what might be done. They have estimates from their public works director that says it's going to be minimal. They had it in their public discussion at the city council that it's going to be minimal. And I've had discussions with Robbie at the highway level that we can figure this out. So this is all brand new to me tonight. But we're gonna, we're gonna move this forward, and we're gonna work through this, because we've got.
If you're at least gonna, if you're gonna move it forward, Don, make sure Vicky's name is spelled correctly.
Well, then, Vicky could have too. Geez. You know, you know, which way is it not spelled correctly?
It's V-I-C-K-I.
Well, there you go. Now, now, now the whole, the whole thing is, we can't enforce anything. Sorry. I didn't realize. There's been a misspelling in a legal document. I've never heard of such a thing. Do I hear a motion to approve this tonight?
Well, I, I think we should have, go ahead and approve it.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
All in favor of approving the agreement between the town of Hudson and the city of Hudson, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
No.
The motion's carried. Okay, the next one is our discussion and action on the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Hudson and the town of Hudson regarding ownership, annexation, jurisdiction, and ask, access control over the portion of Carmichael Road from Vine Street on the north to Highway 94 intersection on the south. And for anyone who's still listening in tonight and is curious about that, there has been a patchwork of, part of Carmichael is the town jurisdiction, part of it is the city jurisdiction, part of it is the town jurisdiction. And it has to do with, uh, striping, fixing potholes, putting up 25 mile per hour speed limit signs. I don't want to be pejorative, but how we ever figured out that we could work on different portions of Carmichael as to who could fix what and work out the numbers is beyond me after the discussion I just heard on Old Highway 35 South. This clears it up. I mentioned in my earlier discussion tonight, they're going to annex in another 16 acres of land on the east side. They've annexed in Faith Community Church. It, it is that whole intersection at, um, Carmichael and Vine needs to be the responsibility of the city. And right now, the county comes up to within about 150 feet of the intersection and stops, and the city needs to take that over. Absent that, we would have had to take down the 25 mile an hour speed limit signs because that was becoming ridiculous. So are there any discussions on that agreement before I ask for a motion to approve?
Yeah, just, uh, Don, so, um, it looks like, you know, we're all agreeing right away to, uh, you know, moving this ownership to the city. But in the meantime, um, it, it doesn't seem quite clear, but I, um, is, is the, uh, is, is all the maintenance of plowing and everything like that, uh, the responsibility of the city then for this area?
Yes.
Immediately?
Yes. I'll take as much time as we need to, other than it's, we're heading into three.
That's great.
I'm, I'm a little confused, Don. I thought you said you were gonna put 11 and 12 together. Why are we talking about 12 separate now?
Tim, you, I, I believe you did ask.
They're to be separated, yeah.
I think you did ask.
But, but I didn't think you agreed to that.
Agreed to what?
Separating them.
Okay, you've totally lost me. We're talking about Carmichael?
No, you said we're gonna lump 11 and 12 together, and when you first started the discussion.
I apologize for that, Tim. I said that colloquially, like, hey, we're gonna talk about two road issues.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I took it literally.
Two, I've got the clerk here who was gonna, was gonna look at every jot and tittle of what we approved, and I have two separate line items on the agenda.
I have moved, we approved the Carmichael interchange deal.
Do I hear a second to that?
Well, I will second that. I want that road to get repaired.
Let's not look a gift horse in the mouth tonight.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's carried. All right, discussion and action on setting a date for the public hearing on chapter 105 zoning ordinance. Liz has done exemplary work on this. We all have. We've had workshops on this. And now, Tim, listen closely, because I'm gonna say this again, and this is colloquial to me, not to this. I'm gonna lump together 14 and 15. Because of discussion and action on setting a date for the public hearing to amend chapter 105, we can discuss. And at the same time, I want to discuss whether or not we want to do another ordinance working session, which I think we should do in April, when Liz and I are still here. And if we don't want to do that, that's fine with me too, but I think we've made tremendous progress. I'll state Tim's position, because I think, I think to understand the other person, you have to be able to state their position. We've done all of this work. The feedback that we've gotten from the S E H is that we need to tighten up our ordinances when it comes to landscaping, lighting, parking, and we've also talked about chickens in residential neighborhoods for months. We have language that we think is the best compromise from all of the cities we've talked to, the planning commissions we've attended, and the workshops we've put together. It's time for us to hold a public hearing on it. Vicky has asked that we add some of the items from the code update, although I think chapter 105 stands by itself. And the quickest we could hold that would be May, the first Tuesday in May. I'm respectful of Tim. Tim is going to be the new town chair. He has voiced concerns that if we do it in May, we might still be under COVID issues with Zoom meetings that could become unwieldy. He's asked me if we would move that date to June or possibly July with the understanding that, yes, a lot of people could come out and talk about chickens. I was at those meetings in the past, but we're talking about residential districts, not all of the egg res area. But be that as it may, we could, we can set a date sometime in July if we want to tonight. But I want to discuss it with the board. And at the same time, while you're collecting your thoughts, so we don't have to do two separate flot trains, it leads into number 15 on your agenda, because the work that we're doing on the codes is ongoing. And I think we've been doing good work on that, and I'm more than willing to set a workshop in April to continue to work on it. So Liz, before the board says anything, I just wanted to see what you have to say on this, and then throw it out to the board.
Um, I do appreciate all of the work that all of you have done and given the attention and the reading and so forth, that you have overlooked everything. Um, obviously, I would like to move it forward for a May public hearing and possible passage at the regular meeting for the, um, chickens, the parking area, the lighting, and the, uh, landscaping. Uh, with, uh, the understanding that's only the part that we've fully reviewed and the plan commission has fully looked at. And any changes to chapter 105 that was noted in the legal analysis will become part of the ongoing working sessions and a public hearing for that portion later on. I, I'm concerned about moving it ahead because COVID is just so unpredictable. And if you're looking at delaying that, you're talking anywhere from two months to six to eight months down the road before you get it through another, more working sessions, plan commission, public hearing, and county.
How close do you, close do you think we are on finishing up the workshop work? Do you think another workshop, we could get close to it? I know Vicky wasn't able to attend the last one, but I think she's a pivotal part of this.
To get through everything in the legal analysis, I, I think you're talking two or three work sessions.
Okay.
Two or three at least, yeah, for the.
For the minimal things, yeah. And I think, uh, the, the other part that I, um, is for Brian and Paul to have the opportunity to go through what they need to go through also, and that could take them some time to go back and forth and review items. And that, those would be issues that would take on an additional two or three working sessions. So you're talking for the whole thing, like I say, six to eight months down the road before you're ready with everything through that legal analysis.
So help me with, help me with the wisdom of this. Does it make any sense to have an additional work session in April? Or not? I'm saying that for all of them.
Well, I believe any, any time that you, you know, put into it, you know, obviously you're gonna move ahead with things. So that would be up to the board, because you're, you are gonna be looking at, um, you know, a change in at least one position, having one new person on.
I, I, I'm, I'm putting it in the context of if we can help do it when it's fresh in our minds, we've been doing it for months. I'm more than willing to do it. I'm also extremely respectful. I, I'm not going to be here as, in, in the elected role. I'll be here to help. But, uh, at some point, we have to pass the baton.
I think you can schedule a working session. I still think the public hearing should wait, just because I mean, we're hoping, Governor Evers announced today that supposedly everybody in 16 and older is supposed to be eligible starting next to, or Monday on the 5th.
And I, I just, I disagree with that. I, I think we should go ahead with how far we've gotten on this and have a public hearing on, in May, and take care of the chickens and take care of what we've got now, and continue working forward on these codes.
That's fine. I mean, Tim's in charge in May, and if he wants to hold the public hearing, he's more than welcome.
Then let me put some input in. I visited with Liz this afternoon for a little bit, Don. And I visited with you earlier today, Don. I would like to wait on the chickens. And if chapter 32 needs some work for the chickens, Susan, because you need to change that chapter to be able to allow the, the, the dog catcher to be able to go out. And we gotta check the dog catcher's contract to make sure that permitted. I would like to wait on the chicken one, but I think we should move forward with the public hearing for the lighting and the, all of that in the commercial in 105. And move that through at this point to the county. And then we can schedule a working session, if you want, to go over what the stuff in the general code is that's not back from Brian and the attorney yet. And we could cover that ground and get it done, if you want to do that as a board in April. Otherwise, we can just wait until we get the attorney and Brian's stuff back.
Well, and you also need to separate 105 from the rest of the.
Correct. Correct.
Because one oh five is what requires the public hearings, not the other.
And the chapter for subdivision requires a public hearing, too. So those two to be combined.
Ninety will go with one oh five. I forgot ninety's in there, too, yes. But the other ones don't.
And there's plenty of there's plenty of sections that you could look at, that you could get done that aren't referred to Brian and the attorney also.
Yes, I agree. Hey, I I they talk about institutional knowledge. There's gonna be who knows how many new people will be on the board. But but I I think it's our responsibility that where we're where we're in this to to pass the baton smoothly. I would say let's do an April working session. If you're comfortable with it, let's hold the public hearing for chapter one oh five. I don't quite understand the nuance of the chickens, but I'm I'm respectful of that, and that's that would probably minimize your concern about having sixty people out there with pitchforks, no pun intended, worrying about chickens. So how do we?
I'm good with I'm good with breaking out the chickens. Because that's more of a broader interest, probably. I think our commercial people are gonna be on top of the, you know, the lighting and so forth. I mean, that's enough notice for them. So let's go with that. And if you want to do a working session, I'm okay with that, too.
Do we have to make a motion?
Please, please do, Ken.
Can I make a motion on site on the date for a working session to work on the ordinance changes from the general code editorial and legal analysis in April sometime?
Anything we can pick out right now?
I have the twelfth and thirteenth open. I can I can be. This is pretty important, I guess. I could be a little more flexible with time if it works, so Vicky can be there. I have the sixth and seventh open.
Let's go with I'm I'm good with the twelfth.
I can. I worked the twelfth.
Oh, I see thirteen.
I could do the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, I'm good.
Is that a Wednesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, Tuesday, the thirteenth, at what time?
The four o'clock. Is that? Does that work for people?
If you want Vicky there, I don't know.
No, you're gonna want to do it earlier if you want.
Fine.
Can you make three o'clock, Ken?
I sure can.
Okay, could Vicky make that?
Yep.
Three.
Okay, three, three P M. Get your motion, Kevin. So just just expand it. So three P M on April thirteenth.
Um, discussion, action, or we're setting a date on a working session to work on ordinance changes from the general code on April thirteenth at three P M. Tuesday, Tuesday, April thirteenth at two P M.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Ken, you said two P M?
Three P M.
All right. I think you said two, but.
I think I said three, but I may have said two.
I said three at first, but I think when you made your motion, you said two. That's why I was.
I'm pretty sure I said three, but what? It's three.
Three, great.
Uh, Ken, Vicky, Vicky was right. The second time your lips moved, it was two.
That's what I thought. That's why I was like, wait.
You know why? Because we're on these Zoom things, then it's probably my Mac.
Okay, now now we need a motion to set the public hearing for uh, five thirty P M. We gotta come up with the wording for that. Let's see, what is the date in that in May? Because we've got to get the notices out.
We'll get the notice. Just set the date for the to amend chapter one oh five, print five thirty on May.
Do you really think we're gonna need an hour?
Well, you never know. We'll just start the meeting immediately after that. So it'll be May third.
Okay.
Uh, Tuesday, May fourth.
May fourth.
Or May fourth. Sorry.
Talking like Ken.
I'm a year. I'm a I'm in twenty twenty-two already.
Who's that?
Okay, so who who's making that motion? So May fourth at five thirty P M for the public hearing, and then everything will flow from that for whatever we're noticing it for chapter one.
Well, it has to be noticed twice. So it'll be noticed April fourteenth and twenty-first.
Correct.
Because it's a class two notice.
Okay, so who's making the motion?
I will.
Okay, Tim is. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, there's been a motion made. I don't think we need to go back through it again. May fourth, five thirty P M. Chapter one oh five, Vicky will get all of the proper notices done.
And she'll note the proper sections in the motion to the the hearing is for.
Oh, yeah, Liz, thank you. Will you work with us on that, too, so we know exactly what?
We already have it all.
Got it done.
It's already done. The notice will have it all spelled out.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion's carried. Okay.
Can I assume the thirteenth is a Zoom meeting also?
Yes, and I'll and I'll send an invitation out to everyone. Okay, I'm just double checking. I don't think I've missed anything here prior to coming up to action on the town road and repairs. We already talked about the bridge for future discussions. I think if we can do those five thousand dollar repairs as opposed to a thousand each time makes sense. I did. I did ask Matt and I sent back out the proposals from last October when we did our budget. They would like to get some correction as to starting their engineering work. And I'm just going to the summary sheet from the October twentieth twenty twenty letter. And let me just make sure that I've got that date, October one, excuse me.
Thank you.
And.
I was looking.
Yeah, and and what they've done is they've added everything up. Panty Lane Overlay, Prairie Lane Over Overlay, Harbor View, King Way Palm Horizon Prep, Zephyr Lane Palm Horizon Prep, and engineering right of way permits for twenty twenty-two construction. All of that adds up to four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And then for twenty twenty-two, we talked about doing La Barge Road reconstruct and widen one mile. Estimate four hundred and five thousand. And Kelly Lane widens point seven three miles. Estimate three hundred and nine thousand. So the total for twenty twenty-two would be seven hundred and fourteen thousand. And for this year, we're we're doing all the overlays and permitting work, construction, engineering work to start these roads. And I just thought, because we're ready to trip the trigger on this, we should put it in the form of a motion and not have it just part of our budget deal. So is there any other discussion on this or any new thoughts? Okay, well, I'll make a motion then because it's the last one of the agenda. I'll make a motion that for twenty twenty-one, we include the overlays that I just discussed outlined in the October first twenty twenty letter from the county for an estimated total of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. And for calendar year twenty twenty-two, we are intending to do La Barge Road for approximately four hundred and five thousand. Kelly Lane for approximately three hundred and nine thousand for a total of seven hundred and fourteen thousand. And that's my motion so that we can keep the county working on these work plans. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
He, do you want to include the other part of that, Don, that that Matt sent? That includes the A M Z crack filling, seal coating, shouldering, brushing?
Uh, for for the
Well, the maintenance.
Yeah, I think.
Maintenance.
I think we should, in case we all get hit by a truck.
Yes, you need to list the maintenance.
That's gonna be their guideline to.
Okay.
Yes.
Can I? Can I add that, Don?
Sure.
So the the general maintenance is what, two hundred and ninety thousand, which is seventy-five thousand for A M C, thirty thousand for crack filling, a hundred and thirty-three for seal coating, fifteen thousand for shouldering, and thirty-seven thousand for brushing. And then I'd like to add that at least five hundred, five thousand, five hundred dollars for the bridge overlay or whatever it takes to get that done.
I completely agree with that expansion of my motion. Because that's exactly what we've all talked about.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on it? I feel good about this because that gives the county their.
All right, and that maintenance is for twenty twenty-one.
Correct.
Yes.
So I will put that down.
Yep. Including including the overlay on the Trump Brook Bridge. And then you then then the board has copies of all all of the correspondence supporting that. All right, there's been a motion made. It's been seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? The motion's carried. All right. I don't think I've missed anything. Communications items for future agendas. Anything the board wants to share? All right, well, this is my last meeting, so I want to thank everyone for working with me and supporting me and being a good neighbor all of these years. So I'm not going away. I'll be around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Don, thanks.
Service, Don.
Don, I don't think we're gonna forget this meeting.
Yeah.
It was like after it was like the Dr. No meeting.
Yeah.
We came up with, we said no.
I agree.
I think this was like my first meeting with Don back in nineteen or so. I don't know when whenever it was. I think it went till about ten thirty.
Sometimes we have those, and they just keep going, so.
It hurts.
All right, any other comments?
No, thanks again, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll see you guys on April thirteenth.
Got it. Thank you.
Vicky and Chris, I'll see you tomorrow to sign those forms.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night. Have a good night.